Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order, and Steve, would you please call the roll?
Uh, Councilman past Nellie.
Present.
Councilman Pitts.
Here.
Councilman Nelson.
Here.
Mayor Potem, uh, Rasidi.
Here.
Mayor, uh, Colwell.
Here.
Okay, tonight we continue our tradition of inviting Villa Park distinguished citizens to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And, uh, tonight we are pleased that Joe and, uh, Mary Jean Ropel have accepted our invitation. We especially like to honor our veterans, um, as their efforts have protected our freedom, including our ability to recite our pledge. Tonight we have the opportunity, opportunity to honor a couple who are both veterans. Joe Ropel, uh, if you could step forward to the podium, please, uh, enlisted in the United States Army in 1958, and Mary Jean enlisted in 1959. Joe met a beautiful Army nurse named Mary Jean while serving in Fort Belvoir, uh, Virginia, and they were married in 1961. It was around this time that Mary Jean was, uh, diagnosed with, uh, multiple sclerosis. Um, as newlyweds, Joe was recalled to active service, uh, during the Berlin Crisis. After his discharge from active service, Joe began a career in the printing industry, and they initially settled in Placentia. The Ropels moved to Villa Park in 1973 with their two children, Mark and Linda, then aged 11 and 9, to a home conveniently located near the Villa Park Little League fields. Mary Jean became active in the Villa Park Women's League, and throughout their children's years at Serrano Elementary and Serravilla Middle School, Mary Jean was active, um, on the, uh, PFSOs of both schools, and volunteered at Providence Speech and Hearing. She also helped their daughter Linda to begin to participate in gymnastics. However, by 1980, the MS began to sideline her activities. On moving to Villa Park, Joe became, uh, actively involved with the Villa Park Little League, where he organized the first raffle to raise funds in, uh, in 1973. Joe is serious about this raffle. He raffled off a Cadillac. And, uh, Joe's raffle netted $15,000 in 1973 dollars. Now, even in today's dollars, not $15,000 is a sizable sum to net in a raffle. However, so that we can fully appreciate the significance of his contribution to the Villa Park Little League, $15,000 in 1973 dollars is equivalent to $84,205 in 2018 dollars. I guess you could say that Joe's raffle was successful. And these funds supported the construction of the snack bar and other improvements to the field that Villa Park Little League continues to enjoy now for 45 years later. Joe certainly made a difference in Villa Park. Joe and Mary Jean's efforts to support their kids' athletic activities were also successful. Their daughter Linda applied her gymnastics training and became a cheerleader at Fort Conley, a girls' Catholic school in Anaheim, and their son Mark played football for Servite. As Conley cheered for Servite, Joe and Mary Jean had the unique opportunity of seeing both Linda and Mark on the field when attending Servite football games. Linda went on to UCLA, where she was a member of the UCLA Cheer Team and cheered at the 1984 Rose Bowl game, where the Bruins, entering as heavy underdogs, defeated the Illinois, or the Illinois Fighting Illini by a score of 45 to 9. Mark played as a linebacker and field goal kicker at Santa Clara University, and after graduation, Mark went on to become an Army Ranger, then was ordained as a priest in the Catholic Church. The Ropels have been, uh, members of the Saint Norbert's Catholic Church since arriving in Villa Park. Since Joe retired from a career in the printing industry, has cared for Mary Jean as her MS progressed, and continues to maintain a regular golfing schedule. Mary Jean now uses a wheelchair, but she's a fixture in their neighborhood as she takes her daily cruise through the streets with her caretaker, often accompanied by Joe. Recently, they even cruised the electric wheelchair to Ralph's. It's a distance of about a mile round trip. And, uh, Joe and Mary Jean continue to enjoy spending time with their family, including four grandchildren, and, um, friends and residing in Villa Park. Now, Joe will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, well, now come down and, uh, Joe? Uh, now have your picture taken with the, uh, council.
And, uh, we have distinguished, uh, uh, citizen pins for you and Mary Jean.
Thank you.
Right here.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, Mayor, while you're just getting situated, I have to report on a closed session?
Yes.
Yep. So, we did discuss the closed session items on the agenda, uh, the two anticipated litigation, significant exposure items, and the city manager performance evaluation. The next city council, we will also continue to have the, uh, city manager performance evaluation, and have a, uh, an agenda item on closed session regarding potential, uh, city manager contract amendments.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask all those in attendance to please silence your cellphones and turn them off if possible. The Villa Park City Council and our staff welcome you to this meeting, and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the city council, please complete and submit a speaker card to the city clerk before the scheduled meeting time. Speaker cards can be found at the entrance to the city council chambers. Speakers will be limited to a time period of five minutes. We now have a presentation on the housing element by our consultant, John Douglas. Mr. Douglas specializes in assisting cities in developing plans for compliance with state-mandated housing requirements, and has assisted Villa Park successfully in complying with the, uh, state high-density zoning mandates last year. And it was approved in October, I believe. Since state approval of our house, housing element last year, additional requirements have been adopted by the state, and, uh, so, uh, John will give us some insight as to where we stand.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. It's nice to be back with you. The state legislature last year adopted 15 bills that is referred to as the Housing Package. Because this is such a lengthy, uh, amount of legislation, what you're going to get from me tonight is not, not even an executive summary, but a brief version of an executive summary. There's no action required by your council on this tonight. This is just an information item. So, what I would like to do is just touch on the very highest of points that were part of the legislation that was adopted by the state legislature last year. I'd like to start off by setting the tone. The reason, one of the main reasons for this legislation was, is that the state legislature believes that a big part of the housing problem, the affordability problem in California, is, uh, local governments and the requirements that they place on housing development. And so, that's, keep in mind that that is the motivating, uh, force here behind these laws. The guiding purpose of these laws is to streamline the development process, and by streamline, the legislature basically means limiting the amount of discretion that local governments have over housing development, such as conditional use permits and public hearings on individual development projects. Now, all of these laws took effect January 1st, but some of them, uh, while some of them have immediate effect, others won't become, uh, really relevant to the city until the next housing element update, which is three years from now. So, what I'd like to do is first, just touch on the things that go into effect, or that are relevant immediately, and then follow up and conclude with the items that will be, become important for the city as it prepares the next housing element update. One of the other things to keep in mind is that, uh, an important consequence of all these laws is cre- creating a greater burden for your staff, because there, there's a lot of additional work that has to be done by local government staff in order to comply with these laws. So, some of the things that take effect immediately are more detailed annual reports to state housing and community development regarding housing applications, housing applications that were approved, denied, the number of units approved, and so forth. Another important requirement is that if the city approves a housing project that has fewer units in it than is anticipated in your housing element, or that does not match the affordability, uh, targets that are in the housing element, then the city has to make specific findings and might be required to rezone additional land to make up any shortfall that that housing approval, uh, results in. Another important piece of state law is referred to as the Housing Accountability Act, and there were changes made in this law that limits the amount of discretion that cities have when they review and approve any housing project, whether it's, uh, affordable or market rate. So, those are the, just the high points of the laws that take effect immediately, that your staff is going to have to be cognizant of whenever they review, uh, a housing development proposal. And then with regard to the changes that will become effective in a couple of years when the city is preparing its next housing element, uh, I believe the most important issue is that the criteria that the state uses in reviewing the potential sites for housing development, they're getting more strict. And so, you will recall that in our last housing element, the two parcels here in Town Center were identified as the primary potential areas for development for higher-density housing. Under new laws, uh, it would be very difficult to, for these parcels in the Town Center to satisfy the requirement, so it's likely that the city will have to look, uh, elsewhere in order to comply with its, uh, housing sites requirement. So, uh, I'm going to stop there. Uh, that's a very quick summary of these 15 laws. I have personally watched two-hour webinars that didn't cover all of the details, and so, if you have any questions this evening, I'd be happy to try to address them, uh, and in the future, if you have any questions, uh, your staff and I would be happy to come back and explain further.
Uh, do the council members have any questions? Okay. Um, question I have, uh, would senior housing qualify for meeting some of the require, these new requirements?
Yes, uh, senior housing does satisfy some of the housing requirements, but it would depend on the, uh, the, the rent or the price level in order to determine which of the affordability requirements the project met.
And, um, what do you, what do you see is, uh, what do we, you think we'll need to do to, um, over the next three years, I guess it is, to comply with this, uh, these new requirements? What kind of changes do you see?
Well, the, the requirements require, uh, more careful monitoring and reporting, uh, basically, and that's the burden that's going to be placed on your staff. And then there are some additional specific legal requirements, uh, such as in the Housing of, uh, Accountability Act, that limit, uh, the process and the conditions of approval and the requirements that cities can place on housing developments. So, there, there's a wide variety of requirements, uh, both the substance of housing, uh, reviewing housing projects, and also the process of reviewing and reporting to the state.
You mentioned that the, uh, the state can come in and, uh, for example, and identify, uh, additional properties or whatever to meet the, their, uh, objectives if, if the city doesn't. Would that require the landowner to develop according to those, uh, new requirements, or?
The, the way the law works is that the state doesn't come in and make any decisions about particular properties or developments, but they require the city to follow certain rules and procedures. And so, uh, if the state found that the city wasn't following the procedures properly, or that the housing element didn't dot all the i's and cross all the t's, then, then they could rescind the, what's, what we refer to as the certification of the housing element. That is, the state's finding that our housing element complies with the law. And so, uh, that would put the city in an awkward spot if that were to happen.
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor, to that specific question, what John's talking about is the known net loss changes. Whereas before, you used to, theoretically, if you had a site in your housing element identified as one of the housing sites, you could use that to meet your affordability goals, but it was, uh, either at a 30 DU, so you could use it for, uh, uh, the low-level classification, and then the, the 20 DU to a moderate. And you, you used to be able to look at really the aggregate of number of units you needed. Now, it's specific to each category. And what John was talking about, yeah, the state can't make us rezone a certain site, but if, with that site gets developed and it isn't at that maximum density, which has the presumption of an affordability, you have to find somewhere else in the city to do it. And, I mean, that can be very difficult. So, it would still be on the city to do that, um, but if we didn't do that, somebody could challenge that approval. So, it's a bit convoluted.
Two questions. Is it true that some counties have been more successful in lobbying Sacramento in, say, what's the word, avoiding the, uh, the housing issue that we're looking into? And if so, can you explain what that's about? Because I've been hearing mixed stories, and I want to find out from your mouth, from your knowledge, what, what, what's what?
Well, yes, it is true. And I think, um, now, I wasn't not personally involved in this, but I, you know, through reading articles and so forth, I understand that Marin Boni was successful in lobbying the state legislature to modify the rules so that, uh, a reduced density would be acceptable, uh, in order to satisfy their affordable housing requirements, reducing it from 30 units per acre to 20 units per acre. So, that's one example where, uh, local government has been successful in lobbying to, uh, either change the rules or get a, a favorable interpretation of the rules.
Now, insofar, insofar as developed in the future, say, somebody wanted to tear down half their house and rebuild it, would this law affect that potentially, or the city's ability to say yea or nay on a project like that? I mean, how, how intrusive is this new law into local government and local planning practices going down the road? Obviously, from what you're saying to me, they can't say, hey, go do, go down and tear five houses down and build a, affordable housing on XYZ street. But how intrusive is this going to be? Where, where do you see it going, or where is it at now as it relates to that?
I think it's unlikely that there would be a, a large change in the way the city approves individual homes, single-family homes. Uh, the, the thrust of, of these laws is on larger housing developments, 10 units or more typically. But, uh, I can tell you that, that the direction that Sacramento is going with these laws and other laws that are, uh, likely to come in the future, is removing the ability of cities to make value judgments or subjective judgments on whether a housing development is desirable or, or compatible with the community. There's a, a thrust towards limiting the city's discretion to objective, very specific standards. And, um, one of the most common areas that local governments get involved in development projects is through design review. So, these laws and, and other laws like them are tightening the rules that cities, uh, must follow when they do things like design review.
But if you have a fully built-out city, how restrictive is this going to be? How much is this really going to affect a city like Villa Park?
I would say that a city like Villa Park that doesn't have much development, uh, much housing development happening compared to Orange or Anaheim, for example, uh, it's likely to have less of an effect, just because there are fewer projects coming through, uh, the system. And, as I said, with individual, single-family homes, uh, there, there may not be much difference that these laws require. Uh, when you get into larger developments, uh, that's where you're most likely to see the changes.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
If I can add something, there is constant legislation right now up in Sacramento and Washington regarding removing local control when it comes to any sort of development. So, we continually say that we're built out, but, uh, what I'm finding in, in traveling up there and talking to the people is if we don't stay on top of it, they want to identify the property. So, you know, we've got, uh, a bill out there, eight twenty-seven, that Weiner's introduced, that says, you know, if you're, what, within a half a mile from a bus stop, they can come in and they can build a, a 12-story apartment complex, and it completely overrides all local jurisdiction. Um, and as far as the council here is concerned, we need to be on top of that to constantly talking to our legislatures, talking to our senators. In that particular bill, I, you know, wrote everybody and said, this is something that we are completely against. I think, uh, Councilman Pitts also did that. And it's something that every day, they're introducing something to take away our local control. And although it may not affect us directly, it does, uh, in the future. So, it's something that, um, we're very aware of. Uh, we're going to do what we can, and there are other elements that are coming up also that are more local, having to do with, uh, the homeless issue, and having to put in homes, not just for affordable housing, but for the, uh, mentally challenged, is what they're calling them, and homeless. There's a whole new crop of legislation coming in that we're swatting flies right now. Um, but we are on top of it, and I thank you for, um, letting us know our housing element as it has been is certainly in place, and we're in compliance. So, the sky's not falling. We just need to make sure that we are on top of these bills such as eight twenty-seven that come through.
Right.
That's going to take away our local control.
That's a, that's a great point, and as soon as the League of Cities reported that, the ink wasn't even dry on the bill that had died in committee, and they brought in the new bill. So, there is just another attempt and another attempt. That's why I raised the question, and thank you for bringing that up and raising the specifics on that.
I have one question. We have on our agenda tonight, uh, something about a accessory dwelling unit ordinance, so that makes it easier to, uh, do these in the city.
Yes.
How does that impact the housing element? Can't there's, those be used for some of the housing that we need?
Hey, yes, and I'm glad you mentioned that, and I haven't spoken about that right now because it's a later item on your agenda. But, yes, accessory units, they used to be called granny flats or second units. They've changed the name now to call them accessory units. The accessory units can play a role in satisfying a city's obligation to provide housing, and as we'll talk later in the agenda on that item, uh, the laws related to accessory units have been tightened to also encourage cities to, uh, approve more of them.
Yes, and, um, it appears also increased the size to, is it 1,200 square feet?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
And I'd like to thank, uh, our city manager for, uh, arranging for, um, John to come and, uh, update us on this housing element challenge, uh, issue.
Oh, yes?
I, I think, uh, during the CDC, we also asked that he come back with the red-line version.
Yes.
Of any updates that we needed to make. Is that in progress?
It's in the agenda package. Sorry, the red-line version of the, uh, accessory dwelling units is in your agenda later on discussed this evening.
But I thought we were also doing any code amendments or anything as a result of the new laws?
Uh, the only laws that will be, the only ordinances or actions we'll be taking at this point, we need to take, are for the accessory dwelling units. We're in compliance. I think down the road will be another issue, which we have to, with the next housing element, but I believe that's, we've got some time, four years.
Yes.
To finalize that, but we, we will have to come back, you're right, with a whole lot of changes at that point.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, John. Wild times. Okay, um, our next presentation will be from the Orange County Sheriff's Department.
Just as he's coming up, I'd just like to, um, I don't know, he won't say, uh, we are losing our lieutenant. Uh, he's being promoted, rightfully so, to a captain, so, um, we, he is going to hopefully ably represent us downtown, but I just want to personally thank him, and, and I know you've all had the chance to do so as well, but we've been very fortunate to have Lieutenant Pocket here, uh, and I hopefully will have even more, uh, support down in downtown when he moves on to be captain, but we wanted to congratulate him, and I, I personally want to thank him for being able to work with him. It's been a pleasure.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I just wanted to say, thank you. It's been an honor to serve this community. Um, I'm happy that I leave the city with a very strong working relationship between both the council and city manager and the department. I'm also happy at the accomplishments that we've put forward over the last year, including ending with a 19% reduction in Part I crimes for the city. Uh, in addition to that, I think we can also safely say that Villa Park may be the only city in Orange County with no homeless issues to speak of. So, that being said, uh, I'm going to jump right into last month's crime report. January, like the other months we saw in 2017, saw significantly low crime for the city. Uh, we had a number of property-related crimes, which I'll go into now. Uh, we had three residential burglaries, one on the 18,000 block of Smoke Tree, where a suspect broke into a window, uh, where a loss was two televisions and a washing machine. This home was under construction. On the 10,000 block of Prado Woods, prescription medicine was taken from a home. Uh, we believe we know who that suspect is, uh, and that's being investigated as we speak. And then on the 9,000 block of Loma, jewelry was taken from a home. There were no signs of forced entry. We had two vehicle burglaries, one in the 17,000 block of Bishop, where miscellaneous tools are taken from a locked van, and another on the 18,000 block of El Moro, where numerous items were taken from two vehicles. One of the vehicles was not locked. Three incidents of grand theft, one on the 9,000 block of Hazel, where 17 handbags were taken from the trunk of a vehicle, one on the 9,000 block of Crestview, where a suspect took unsecured construction tools from a truck bed, and one in the 17,000 block of Santiago, where a 200, 200-pound dirt compactor was removed from a locked fence. Traffic accidents were lower this month. Uh, we had a total of four traffic-related collisions. Two were non-injury traffic accidents, and two were hit-and-runs regarding parked vehicles. And then as the summation of my crime report, are there any questions?
Any questions, council? Okay. Uh, we'd like to, uh, have our picture taken with you.
Absolutely.
So, can also come down?
You know what? That was on my agenda and I completely forgot. I'm so sorry. Uh, Lieutenant Pat Rich, if you couldn't stand up. He'll be taking over for me, uh, as the chief of Villa Park, as well as the chief of another 154 square miles in North Orange County.
Come on up. Come on up.
Has a very extensive resume, and actually, as a side note, trained me when I was a new deputy in the jails, so I can assure you, you're being left in good hands, and I'll let Lieutenant Rich introduce himself.
Thank you very much, Lieutenant Patrick Rich, and the greatest thing about, uh, Lieutenant Pocket getting promoted to captain is that filled a void, or created a void, and I was able to fill that, and now I get to be the chief of police services in the lovely city of Villa Park. So, I'm looking very forward to that. I had the opportunity to meet, uh, the mayor. serve all of you and all the lovely residents. So once again, thank you.
Thank you. Welcome on board, and I'm sure you'll find Villa Park to be a wonderful place to work. So, thank you. Okay, next presentation is the Orange County Fire Authority.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Colton Nash, being Orange County Fire Authority Battalion Chief. Just for the record, I'm sticking around for a while. Incident summation for the reporting period of February. The Orange County Fire Authority responded to twenty-three incidents. None of those classified as major incidents for the reporting period of February. Additionally, Orange County Fire, I'd like to remind the residents of Villa Park that your local fire station in, has sand and sandbag for any emergency flooding needs that you might have. Not that the significant rainfall that we had today or that is forecasted in the near future is probably going to even produce any floods. But if you need it, it's there for you, and it's free of charge, so just come by the fire station and help yourself. And I'd be happy to answer any questions of the city council.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next presentation is from the Villa Park Library.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. I'm Samantha Smith, Branch Manager of the Villa Park Library. Thank you for having me. So my report begins with, last month, I mentioned the Friends of the Villa Park Library are funding a library refurbishment. We have already started the process and see changes in the library already. We request your patience as we undergo our refurbishment. We will remain open, so you may visit the library, but be aware that there may be noise or things are in the process of moving around. So you may come in one day and they might be, some, a material might be in one place, and you come back the next day, it might be in another place, and you'll come back again later, and it could be in a different place again. So we request your patience, and we hope things go as smoothly as possible. If you ever need help locating items or have questions, please ask library staff. We're here to help you. Since our last meeting and my last report, we have had data installed in the west-facing wall. That's the wall closest to this room, on the other, actually, on the other side of this wall. Moving the computers to a more suitable area required installing data. In the future, we will be having four computers for adults, two for children, three laptop stations, a self-checkout machine, a computer printing station, and an online catalog where library users can search for books and use our digital resources, such as our databases. And the data was installed this past month, and it was purchased by the County of Orange and installed by the County of Orange as well. And it's here now. It looks a little bit different. There's some tubes coming down the wall, and if you wonder what those are, those aren't permanent. It's just in the meantime. We're currently in the process of negotiating a price quote and finalizing the purchase of our new furniture and shelving. So, you know, every time you come in, it might look a little bit different, and we appreciate your patience. Regarding library statistics, last month, our circulation, or the number of materials checked out, was up, as was the number of library cards issued. The library is continually working on conducting library outreach and seeking community partnerships. Last month, we scheduled an outreach at Villa Park Elementary, and we have another coming up in March. We also, last month, briefly met with students from Serrano Elementary School, and we look forward to scheduling additional class visits and school outreach visits in the future. The Villa Park Library has an interesting program coming up next month. In March, you will be offering a program called Spring into E-Reading. For the entire month of March, I'm sorry, the entire week of March nineteenth through March twenty-second, from eleven a.m. to twelve p.m., patrons are invited to come into the library for hands-on instruction in downloading free e-books to your tablet or device. You can come in anytime during those times and drop off, or drop in, and we will provide instruction and assistance in downloading digital books from the library. And, you know, please consider dropping by one of these days for assistance. It'll be a good program for anyone interested in e-books. We have also a variety of county-wide programming coming up, county-wide library programming, including a program called Literary Orange. Literary Orange is OC Public Library's celebration of readers, authors, and libraries. This event is held annually at the Newport Beach Marriott and features keynote speakers, author panels, lunch, and refreshments. This year, we're happy to report that the event sold out. However, this event is an annual event, so please check back and consider attending next year. Tickets go on sale in mid-December, and this is a big event for the library system, and we already are planning next year's event. If you're interested in this event or any author events, you can always go on to the county website, which is the ocpl.org, and you can sign up for our Author Connections newsletter. This will tell you about events such as Literary Orange. It will also tell you about events, literary events being held here at the Villa Park Library, and it's a great way to keep informed about literary events in the Orange County area. One new feature that we're really excited to report about is the text messaging feature. So previously, you only had the option to receive library notifications via automated phone call or email. You now have the option to receive them via text message. And if you're interested in that service, you can come into the library or give us a call, and we can update your account. The library also now offers Lynda.com. This is a free resource that you can use in the library or from home with your library card. It's an online learning platform that helps anyone learn business, software, technology, and creative skills to achieve personal and professional goals. So it's basically a free online class that you self-paste, and it offers a variety of topics, everything from just entertainment to learning to use various computer programs, software technologies. It's very interesting, and if you ever need help, we can help you with that. And I encourage people to try it out. Another resource that we want to remind everybody about is that we offer Ancestry.com Library Edition. This is only available in the library, but it's a way to research your family history and find historical information using census data, government records, primary resources, images, and more. Again, it's only available in the library, but if you've never used this resource before or you want to use it in a more dynamic way, we invite you to please ask library staff for a tutorial. All library staff is trained in this resource. We actually have one library assistant who is highly proficient, I would say, an expert. And if you're interested, you can schedule a one-on-one, one-hour class, and we can teach you how to make a family tree, how to use this really robust service in a meaningful way. As an update, the library is currently accepting volunteers. All volunteers must submit a volunteer application to the library in person, and the applications are available at the service desk. We typically request that teens entering high school or be entering high school, but we can make special allowances for younger teens wishing to complete service hours for special projects. Special allowances are at the discretion of library staff. Volunteers eighteen or over must complete a background check prior to starting their volunteer work. And adult volunteers, we request a commitment of one year. During the month of December, we had three teen volunteers. They did a great job. And in the month of February, we were excited to report that we have three teen volunteers that volunteered as well. So all of our volunteers did a great job, and I feel it was really mutually beneficial. Volunteering at the library is a great way for teens to gain necessary work experience to put on their resumes or college applications. It's also a way, a great way for teens to be engaged in their community and discover their library. So things in general are going very, very well at the library, and it's just positive things to report. And as always, I appreciate this community and our library patrons. And this concludes my librarian's report. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Well, we have a great library and an even better head librarian. Thank you very much. I greatly appreciate your reports every month.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I will now move to council member meeting attendance reports. Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District?
That would be me. Congratulations is due to the staff of the Orange County Mosquito and Vet Control District for receiving the two thousand seventeen Integrated Pest Management Award from the California Department of Pesticide Regulations. And I have a video here of the General Manager, Rick Howard, explaining what the district's integrated management, integrated pest management program is.
With the Orange County Mosquito and Vet Control District, we protect Orange County's population of three-point-two million people from four vectors. Mosquitoes, rats, red-appared fire ants, and flies. The district responds to these vectors as guided by integrated pest management principles. What that means is that we use a variety of tools, methods, and strategies to reduce the number of these vectors and to protect the public while minimizing the impact of the environment. The focus of the IPM program is outlined in the district's IPM plans and includes education, awareness, surveillance, and source reduction and treatment. Following two intense West Nile virus outbreaks in two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen, and the first detection of invasive mosquito, the district realized that he had to implement new IPM strategies to better control disease-carrying mosquitoes. As part of that process, our laboratory staff analyzed mosquito surveillance data that included locations of West Nile virus-caused mosquitoes and known breeding sources. Using GIS, the analysis identified nine cities that were at high risk for ongoing West Nile virus activity each year, and targeted messaging and outreach to those cities as part of the district's High Risk Nine Cities Initiative. The initiative included me working with city staff and residents to remove or reduce mosquito breeding sources and increase public awareness within the communities. The district also implemented a go-to-go mosquito inspection team to address the ongoing concern of invasive mosquitoes in Orange County. The goal of these teams is to produce one-on-one education to residents, inspect properties for breeding sources, and provide mosquito control. From two thousand fifteen to two thousand seventeen, our go-to-go teams visited over forty thousand properties. By focusing on outreach and education, we empower residents to assist in reducing mosquito breeding sources in mosquito populations. Due to changing environmental regulations and growing concern over secondary poisoning, the district evaluated modified services provided by our rat control program. We know that homeowner awareness and participation, habitat reduction, is the most effective method of rat control. So we've modified our services to focus on homeowner education with an emphasis on what can be done successfully excluding rats from their property. By shifting the focus to empower residents, the district was able to significantly reduce the amount of rat bait used in our rat control program. The Orange County Mosquito and Vet Control District works hard to implement IPM in our daily tasks. This process is a team effort with staff from all departments meeting and working together to protect the residents of Orange County from vectors of infectious diseases. We want to thank the Department of Pesticide Regulations for recognizing our commitment to integrated pest management.
That concludes my report. Any questions?
The next report is the Orange County Sanitation District. That's me. On January twenty-fourth, I participated in a meeting of the Orange County Sanitation District Board. With the pending retirement of the Assistant General Manager, the board approved establishment of a second Assistant General Manager position. And this will assist with the transition and facilitate succession planning for future changes. On February seventh, I participated in the Orange County Sanitation District Operations Committee meeting. And in addition to routine operational and maintenance items, the district will be issuing RFP for installation and operation of a large battery storage system. The equipment that is down at the district is all quite large, and this is going to be quite a substantial undertaking for a very large battery storage system. But it's anticipated that this system will reduce power costs and improve power liability. Okay, and that concludes my presentation. Orange County Fire Authority?
That's going to be my report. On January twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen, I was sworn in as a Board of Director for the Orange County Fire Authority, representing our city. It is, it's been, it's been an interesting time for the Fire Authority. Some things we're reading in the newspaper about the ongoing dispute between the air operations with the Sheriff's Department and the Fire Authority have been at the forefront of many of the discussions, most of which, of course, are in closed session. Needless to say, I think that there's a credible attempt by both the Sheriff's Department as well as the Fire Authority to try to work through their issues, work through some of the challenges that are before them. That's been the direction of the board. That's been the direction that we provided to the chief and that the chief has provided to his troops at the Fire Authority. And I think the same thing can be said for the sheriff. And they're continuing with their efforts in mediation. They're looking for more defined roles as brought forth by the state of California. And hopefully, we'll get some positive resolutions so that the folks on the ground aren't concerned about some sort of dispute occurring up in the skies when they, when they're on the ground looking for help. With respect to, I should say, last, that was January's meeting. This current meeting, which was on the twenty-second of February, we interviewed prospective candidates for the position of chief. And obviously, much, in fact, all of that is closed-session material, so we won't be discussing that. But needless to say, we have some fantastic candidates that have applied. We're looking forward to hopefully having some decisions here in the future. And I personally am looking forward to having a more significant role for Villa Park on some of the subcommittees, so that Villa Park has a more decisive role in how things are done in Orange County. It's a great body. It's a great organization. I'd like to thank the Orange County Fire Authority for their service, as well as the Sheriff's Department. I think together, we're making Orange County a very, very safe place. And then lastly, on the twenty-third, Friday evening, myself and many of the council members here, including the mayor, attended the Orange County Fire Authority Best and Braveest, where some of the truly best and bravest of the Orange County Fire Authority were honored for heroic actions, and both within our community as well as abroad, including a unit that was sent to help victims of Hurricane Harvey. And I'd like just to thank everybody that was a part of that. It was a pleasure seeing everybody there, and I look forward to serving Villa Park on the board. That's all I have.
Okay. Next committee report is Orange County Library Advisory Board.
Yes, I attended the meeting on Thursday, January twenty-fifth, in Santa Ana. There were several agenda items, election of new officers, the approval of the two thousand eighteen meeting schedule, which is comprised of four meetings, basically. They also did the, we reviewed and approved the revised fee schedule for various and sundry books. There are a lot of things taken off the schedule, a lot of things put on the schedule, and prices have changed, so we approved that. And it was interesting. We also reviewed the library's code of conduct for people coming into the library. There have been several revisions made to that code of conduct, and it was interesting to see and hear some of the things that had changed, based on some of the behaviors and so forth of people coming in and out. So, good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Budget and finance?
No meeting.
Community development and public safety?
We met on February the fifth. There are several items up for discussion tonight, some you've already heard about and some that you're about to hear about that'll come up later.
Okay. Human resources?
No meeting.
City school advisory?
We had a meeting, and some of those issues are going to be discussed later on in the agenda, but we had a nice turnout from the PTA and the PFSOs, and just went over the calendar for the year.
Law enforcement advisory?
On February twelfth, the law enforcement advisory committee met, and we had three members of the public that came forward with concerns or just information from our community. Nicole Jones with the Villa Park High School Parent-Faculty-Student Organization spoke about the town center and some of the negative things that were going on with student behavior. Very happy to report that with the efforts of the Sheriff's Department, in particular Deputy Benzy, and the cooperation of the Orange Unified School District, the merchants, and frankly, the parents, a lot of those inappropriate activities have been curbed. And reports verified through our city manager have stated that, in fact, that's the case. We hope that parents continue to work with their children, and residents are obviously tolerant of some youthful exuberance, but at the same time, appropriate behavior is conducted. Mr. Jim Griswold came and spoke about a crossing guard at the intersection of Villa Park Road and Center. And then an unnamed resident spoke about traffic at Serrano and Brenmar. Other items of note, the Neighborhood Watch Program is hovering around two hundred current residents. and frankly, the parents, a lot of those inappropriate activities have been curbed, and reports verified through our city manager have stated that, in fact, that's the case. We hope that parents continue to work with their children, and residents are obviously tolerant of some youthful exuberance, but at the same time, appropriate behavior is conducted. Mr. Jim Griswold came and spoke about a crossing guard at the intersection of Villa Park Road and Center, and then an unnamed resident spoke about traffic at Serrano and Brenmore. Other items of note, the Neighborhood Watch Program is hovering around 200 current residents, which is a significant uptick in the last few years. And upcoming events, the Home Security Fair will be on Saturday, March 17th, between 2:00 and 4:00 p.m. It was a fantastic success last year. We had standing room only in council chambers, and I would expect nothing but the same. If anything, it's going to be even more significant. Please come. Other issues, there were some crime prevention and traffic safety ideas that were discussed, speed bumps on Serrano Avenue. Currently, there's a traffic study being done to address speeding and parking issues on Serrano Avenue, based upon resident concerns. The crosswalk at Lincoln and Wanda is being proposed for additional pedestrian safety, the possible relocation and/or illumination of that, illumination from the standpoint of just intermediate lighting, but everything is, at this point in time, I should say, is tentative. So there's not going to be any streetlights or anything like that that are contrary to what Villa Park's about. Taft and Santiago intersection, discussion for options for northbound traffic on Santiago, turning east in an effort to reduce backup on Santiago, was discussed, and a couple other items. That's about it. That's all I have for my report.
Very good. Any questions? Investment Advisory Committee?
The Villa Park Investment Advisory Committee met this month. The first thing we did was to welcome the new finance manager. That was his first meeting. And we also had a Par's Section 115 trust update with presentation of the ad hoc subcommittee's recommendation for Par's portfolio investment strategy. The next step is development investment policy statement. This was assigned to an ad hoc subcommittee of two members, and we expect this to be completed and entire program presented to council at the next council meeting. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you. Friends of the Villa Park Library, I attended a meeting of the Friends of the Villa Park Library on February 1st, and nothing to report. Infrastructure Management Advisory Committee, I was unable to attend the February 8th meeting of the committee, however, I understand that our finance manager made a presentation on the city budget so that the engineers could understand better, you know, what resources we have to work with. And were there any other activities or things discussed?
No, just a point of clarification. I actually made the presentation.
Oh, okay.
And I believe we still have the Community Services Foundation.
Oh, you already covered that. Community Services?
No, Foundation.
The Foundation?
Community Services Foundation?
Yes, me.
Oh, didn't you address? Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's not a whole lot that we did, but it's a little teeny bit. No, you finished. You finished.
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Well, we did meet on the 28th of last month. There were several discussion items. Number one, we're still continuing with the concept for the new community center that we're looking into. We've been presented conceptual, I won't say drawings, but pictures and floor plans and things of that nature that we're reviewing right now, made some suggested changes for the gentleman that's doing the work pro bono for us, and we'll continue to evolve that. We still have some work to do with regards to, you know, how it connects or overhangs or whatever it does with the city building here. So there's some work that the city manager and Bill will have to do with the architect to encompass that. So we're encouraged by things continuing to move along if it makes the adjustments. We want to make this very community-friendly. Want to make it so that it's open, so that it has room enough for, you know, 400 or 500 people to accommodate just about any size event, because if you start, you know, people around different events like NCL and others may come in and require a large space to be able to do that. So, looking forward to that. We're also doing rewriting the Articles of Incorporation with Steve's help, which will be presented, I assume, sometime in the very near future to council for approval.
The actual, the Articles of Incorporations we have, the council has approved last month, so those have been submitted.
Okay. Bylaws. Yes, you're right. I'm sorry. And that's about it. There were some suggestions about boat parade and a Santa tour, which we're going to talk about further this week, but I don't have anything else to report on that.
Thank you, Robbie. Okay. This time, members of the public may address the council on any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. Opportunities will also be provided for public comment on each agenda item. Comments are limited to five minutes per person and 30 minutes for all comments. And this time, are there any speaker cards?
Mayor, we do have Amanda Richard.
Okay.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. I was the one who brought up the issue on Serrano last month at the meeting, and I just wanted to say that I appreciate everyone's effort in the surveying that is going on right now. It is noticed. I also noticed this morning that there was the striping counting cars on Serrano. And I was curious if you had the stats on what was found so far as the person that came out and did the surveying, as well as the speed limit sign that was out there this past week, if you have the information on that?
It's all, it presents in one package. So we had the individual out, he was actually doing pedestrian counts.
Okay.
Pedestrian, and you'll see the counts of the vehicles at this point, which is about a seven-day period, and it takes it all through the period, so we have random times to all through the day.
Okay.
So it's a sort of a timely process. It takes some time to compile all the data.
I don't expect overnight changes. I just appreciate everything that's being done so far. I really do. I just wanted to also make this clear, that this is not about Feather Hill. This is about Serrano. This isn't anything to do with the entrance of Feather Hill as far as the residents. This is just about the safety of the children and the families. I just wanted to make that clear, because I know that you're upset or you don't agree with all the stuff that's going on in Feather Hill, as you had stated last meeting, and I just wanted to let you know that this is about Serrano. I'd also like to clarify that I just stumbled across a Facebook page about Villa Park. It is actually a group that is, unfortunately, a public-shaming one. That's called the Student Pickup and Drop Off Hall of Shame, in which our local residents and other members, even city council members, are part of this group. And it is pictures of families and cars that people are taking and posting online. And their reason for this Facebook page, and I quote, "Is please post your most entitled, impatient, and irritating parent in the pickup line at your child's school. We can't do anything about it, so we might as well expose them." This is disgusting, and this bullying Facebook page that we have a member on, I would hope that they would use their power on city council to actually let them know that something can be done, and that all they need to do is voice and come to the city, and you'll listen as you've listened to me. But obviously, it's not just me that, you know, is concerned about the safety as others as well. So again, I just really wanted to stand top and find out what was going on, and just let you know that I am here, and I will continue to be here, because this is something I'm very passionate about, is the safety of these kids and the families that are just trying to get to school. So, thank you very much, again, for everything that you're doing, and I appreciate it.
Question?
Yes.
On that public-shaming website, which is horrible, is it a current city council member?
Yes.
You're kidding.
So, I just, I just don't agree that
Absolutely.
anybody should be partaking in a public-shaming group that is a council member?
Agreed.
Let alone having the ability to be the ear for those people that have such an issue, not speak up and let them know that they could be heard, and something can be done, especially since they have such a huge influence within the schools.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
We have no other speakers, but I will up your hands.
Oh, we do have one in the back.
Yes, I live on Brenmore Drive, and of course, all the problems with traffic is, but there's something I'd like to see done there, and it'd be a lighted crosswalk right at Feather Hill. That is the most dangerous place you can run into, especially on weekends, not just school, but weekends, when all the games are. And, you know, people come from all over, and they just walk out in the crosswalk or they dart out, and you're driving down the street and you slam on the brakes. You know, I'm in the crosswalk, oh, it's safe, okay? And if you had a lighted one, like is on Hughes Street, I think it'd really help out. The other thing I'd like to mention tonight is ramps for the handicap. We walk around Villa Park with a motorized wheelchair. Well, we know where to go from now on, hit all the ramps, but when cars are parked in a bike lane, and there's no way you can get out, you have to go out in traffic around the cars, and some of the streets do not have handicap ramps. You can get on the street on one end, go to the other end, there's no ramp. So if there's something that could be done, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Rolp, I'd like to address that. I've spoke to our city manager about two weeks ago about this issue. I know Mayor Colacott has been keenly interested in this issue, too. I fully intend to sponsor, once we get some data back from our city engineer, about this issue, and not just about the schools at Serra Villa and Serrano, but also Villa Park Elementary, and see how we can work with our handicapped individuals to create proper ramping for that. So your voice has definitely been heard, and we're just waiting for some data. So expect to see something next month on our council agenda about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we move on to public hearings. First is waive reading in full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda.
Item number three is a motion Item number three is a motion to waive the reading in full. This is basically allows us to waive the reading in full and, at the time of introduction, the council can adopt an ordinance in lieu of it. It allows for more speedy and efficient meetings. There are two meetings of each ordinances and whatnot, so this is a routine item that we have in the agenda each month.
I'll move the motion.
Second. Is there anybody, anyone here to speak at this hearing? If so, please step to the podium. Does it appear that there are any, thank you, council members, is there any discussion regarding this item? Okay, is there a motion? We have a motion on this matter, so please record your vote.
It passes by a 5-0 vote.
Okay. Thank you. Our next hearing is the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Would staff, please give the staff report?
This is, item number four is, again, you corrected, the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. This is action is taking as a follow-up to the adoption of our housing element. John Douglas, our consultant, is here. I would say this is important here. This would be, the recommendation would be the adoption of the ordinance, but this is the first reading, so the second, tonight you would simply be recording your vote on it or taking any action, and setting the 27th of February as the final adoption date, but John Douglas can give a summary of the ordinance.
Thank you, Steve. Mayor and council, good evening again. This is a proposed ordinance to amend the municipal code regarding the city's regulations on accessory dwelling units, also referred to sometimes as granny flats or second units. So what I'd like to do is first, just give an overview of what the law requires and the specific, specific things that cities must do if they choose to regulate in this area. And then, following up on one of the questions at the council's committee, point out areas where cities do have some discretion to adopt specific changes to the recommended state regulations. So, the purpose in the state law is to, again, like we were talking about earlier, to encourage and streamline the process of housing development, in this case, accessory units that are either attached to or detached from a single-family home. The changes that have been made in state law recently establish what you might think of as default rules that apply in the absence of any city regulation, but it creates the opportunity for cities to adopt regulations in order to govern this area. The way the law works is that if cities choose not to adopt any local regulations, then the state rules would apply, and if cities do want to adopt regulations, then in some areas, they are limited to specific requirements that are contained in the state law, and in other cases, there may be some flexibility that cities could adopt customized local regulations, and I'll talk about those in just a second. So in terms of the general requirements in state law, the law declares that any existing ordinance that a city has is null and void if it does not completely comply with the state rules. So there are currently some areas where Villa Park's ordinance deviates from the current state rules, so it is, by action of the state, it's null and void, and so we're proposing to amend the regulations to come into compliance with state law. The law declares that a second unit or an accessory unit as part of a single-family property does not violate zoning rules. It does not constitute a multifamily use of the property. It's consistent with general plan and zoning for single-family use. It also requires that if a city does choose to adopt an ordinance to regulate in this area, that that ordinance, after it is adopted, must be submitted to the State Department of Housing and Community Development for review. Now, this is important, because what that state HCD review does is it sort of creates a two-tiered standard. There is what's in the law, and then there is what HCD thinks is a good idea. And that second criterion, it comes into play with the review of the city's housing element. And so, as I go through this, you may see where we are recommending certain things, not so much because the law explicitly requires it, but because we expect that HCD is going to have certain opinions on what the city does in this area. And I'll get more specific about that when I go a little further along. Councilmember Nelson asked earlier if these accessory units could help the city in regards to its targets and requirements for complying with affordable housing law in its housing element, and the answer is yes, it can. And so it's important that if the city does permit accessory units, that those be recorded and taken credit for, so that when it comes time to talk to the state about the housing element, then the city can show what has been accomplished in terms of accessory units. So with regard to the specific requirements, that there is no flexibility, let me just highlight those. No city may totally prohibit accessory units for any reason. There has to be at least some portion of the city where they are allowed. Accessory units must be allowed in any existing home if it is carved out from existing space. So if a home, single-family home, is remodeled so that there is a separate portion of it as an accessory unit, that must be allowed. No occupancy restrictions can be placed other than your basic building code requirements. For example, you cannot have an age restriction. Years ago, they were referred to as granny flats, where the person had to be a senior citizen that occupied these. You cannot require that it be occupied by a family member. So it is very strictly regulated now in terms of what occupancy the city can require, and is limited to just the number of people that would comply with building code requirements. An accessory unit may be either attached to an existing home, or it can be a detached unit. Cities must allow an accessory unit to be rented, separate from the main home. Cities must allow an accessory unit to be rented, separate from the main home. With regard to parking, only one additional parking space can be required, regardless of the size of the accessory unit. And under certain circumstances, no additional parking can be required. And the two situations that are relevant to Villa Park are proximity to a bus route. So there is an OCTD route that goes along Santiago Wanda, and if an accessory unit is within half a mile of a bus stop, you cannot require any additional parking. So that half a mile would be approximately Center Drive. So from Center Drive to the west, could be within that area where no additional parking may be required. An accessory unit may be manufactured housing, rather than stick-built. You cannot require fire sprinklers unless fire sprinklers are also required in the main home, either currently, or if it's a proposed, single-family home to be built at the same time as a new accessory unit.
Can I interrupt you for one moment? We don't require any of this now for our additional dwellings. Are you just reviewing?
I'm just reviewing what the requirements are. Some of these topics are included in the existing ordinance, such as parking.
Okay, I was gonna say, because we don't require the majority of that already, so I just want to clarify that for the residents, that they understand that nothing's being changed. We've been pretty good with our granny flats. Thank you.
The city cannot require that a separate utility connection be constructed if it is an accessory unit that's carved out of an existing home. If it's an addition to, or a separate detached, then the city or the utility agency may require a separate connection. And then, as I mentioned, all other normal building code requirements still apply.
Doesn't the homeowner have to live in the front house, in the main dwelling unit? You can't rent both pieces of property?
That's right. The city can require that either the main home or the accessory unit be owner-occupied.
Okay.
The city can require.
Can require.
We don't do that yet. There's not an option. We don't have to have that.
That's right. If the city chooses to be silent on that and allow both to be rented out, that's acceptable under the law, but you can require that one or the other.
But we're not, are we changing any of this? I think that's where I'm getting at, because I know what our terms are. Are you suggesting that we change some of this? I'm just a little confused. Do we need to change that?
Steve, the red lines are in the ordinance, aren't they?
Yeah, the red lines, attachment three has the red lines.
I'm having a hard time bringing it, it's not, it's not, I'm not getting all the documents being brought up on the iPad, which is...
Get you a hard copy.
I'm sorry, which is some of the problems with the technology here, so that's, I'm not getting the red line. Thank you.
Yes, I'm looking, my memory is not perfect, so I'm looking at the strikeout, underlined version, and the current, the city's current ordinance does have a requirement that the unit be owned, that the same, it be, same ownership, the primary home and the accessory unit. I'm not seeing right now a requirement regarding rental.
Other than short-term rentals.
Page two, item F, top of page, owner occupancy required.
In the strikeout, or in the clean?
The strikeout.
The strikeout.
I'm sorry. Is owner occupancy required, either the principal dwelling unit?
Yes, thank you.
Or shall be the exclusive occupancy of the owner of the lot and shall not be rented, or at least as long as the accessory dwelling unit exists.
That's a big change.
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's not something that...
Is that state law? Does that conform with the state law?
The city may require that one or the other be owner-occupied.
But that's city. It's not required by the state. We can rent both units out. We can rent them, we can rent both homes out.
That's right.
But this here says, this here says owner occupancy required. We don't want, the city of Villa Park does not have that now. So that's a big change for us.
If we have, if we've done a good job of our track changes on the ordinance, the way the current ordinance reads, one of the residential dwellings on the lot, which second or proposed, is proposed to be established...
Shall be the...
I'm sorry.
There might be, there might be an error in the...
I think what he's saying is that we currently require that one or, that the owners live in one or the other of the units.
That's not how I'm reading the red line version.
Yeah, it's, I, the, yeah, I think, well, you'll get it, you'll see the red line, but it does, the current ordinance says owner occupancy, owner occupancy required. One of the residential dwellings on a lot on which the second dwelling unit is proposed to be established shall be for the exclusive occupancy of the owner of the lot and shall not be rented, or at least as long as the second dwelling unit exists. That's how it reads at this point.
So that might be something we might want to change.
I appreciate it.
I think we need to take this back and do a little bit.
It's going back.
Well, no, I mean, so currently it does say that, currently it does say that the current ordinance has, says required, that one of them is required. Owner occupancy is required on one of them. That's what the current ordinance, not the changes recommended, the changes recommended are just consistent, which says either the principal dwelling unit, or it revises it, but it doesn't change substantively that there's a requirement.
That's right.
Also stipulates in there it can't be short-term rental either.
Yes.
But that's something that the council voted against, having a policy, we did not want to police short-term rentals. We've already, we already had that come to council, I think, two years ago, that we didn't want to regulate that. I, I think this needs to, we need a little bit more research on here. I've not seen this before, and we, this has come up in the past, and I'm a little surprised that this is, this was existing language. So it's come to my surprise that this was existing language already. And if it is existing language, we need to fix it, because I don't want to stifle an owner from not renting their property. And if that was in there, that was, been in there for years, and the last eight years, nobody's seen it.
This is existing ordinance that's been modified.
I understand that, which means it hasn't, somehow or another, it's bypassed the existing council for not reading it. So now that we've caught it, we need to fix it, because we don't want someone to have a main house and their flat not be able to rent their property. We don't need to require our homeowners to live, you know, on the property. We don't want that.
Steve, we're not looking for adoption tonight, this is just the first reading.
No, this is the first reading, so you could give direction and adopt in subsequent, I mean, it can't be adopted tonight, anyway.
Can we, can it come back as a first reading, though? I don't want it to come back as a second reading, because that's, that's a, that's a pretty, that's a pretty big statement right there for this city.
I, yes, I just want to be clarified that some of the language that you're saying are big statements are actually already part of the current ordinance.
I understand that. I completely understand that, and I'm surprised that we haven't caught it up to this point. That that's, and I acknowledge that.
But now would be the time, if you want to change it, now's the time to consider and change that. So if you want to make changes, if you want to give us some direction along those lines, we can bring it back as a first ordinance, I mean, as first reading. It is noticed as a first reading, so we just simply have to go through the process, again, of making the March 27th meeting our first reading. At a first reading, you can make any changes you want, and the next meeting can be a second reading or a first reading.
I think we all ought to take it back and review it, and send you a note and say, these are the things, the areas of concern, or whatever, and then you can take those into consideration, redraft the ordinance, and from that point...
We're happy, now would be the time, if you want to make those changes, now would be the time.
Yeah, this is pretty, did this document come like this to the CDC? Did it come?
No, no.
So you didn't see it even in this detail?
We didn't see the red line, no.
Okay.
He asked for a red line of what changes would impact the current ordinance, and that's what he's done here.
Okay.
Okay? However, I guess none of us had the history back of when this was all originally developed, and would there be any concerns for some of it?
And we might find other things, too.
Yeah, I'd like to propose that this, give the council, you know, at least the next month to read this in detail with the red line.
Let's finish the presentation.
Why don't we, why don't we give direction as part of today that this, that we bring it back on March 27th as a first reading? And any changes subsequent to, you can ask that you could bring to our attention individually, can provide us data. Over the next month, you have a time, and we can bring forward a revised draft first reading ordinance on March 27th. And if you have any changes then, we can still subsequently change for the April council meeting, when it's finally adopted.
Okay.
So I would, yeah, I would ask, though, that you do give us some input, so that we know what you might want to change for the first reading, for the next draft.
Okay, but let's, Mr. Douglas, please proceed with your presentation, or complete that, and, because I suspect there may be other words that we're gonna find.
Yeah, thank you. With regard to the portions of the city where ADUs must be allowed, any residential zone, unless the city makes specific findings about a health and safety problem. And one example is a fire hazard zone. And there was a map attached to your packet that shows that a small portion in the northern area of the city is within a high fire hazard zone. Also with regard to parking, the state law requires that that additional space must be allowed to be in a tandem configuration, you know, stacked up. It also may, it also must be allowed within a setback area, unless, again, unless there are specific health and safety reasons why that's not feasible. The review process must be ministerial, which means no subjective judgment goes into the approval process, and no public hearing can be required, so it's simply a cut-and-dried, does the application comply with the rules, or does it not? If there is design review that's done as part of the process, it's limited to compliance with objective standards. So attractiveness, architectural style, and so forth, those are examples of things that are not permitted in terms of design review. So now, looking at the areas where the city does have some latitude in its local standards, size is the main one. The state default is 1,200 square feet maximum, or 50% of the existing home, whichever is less. And so the draft ordinance that's before you honors that state default standard, the 1,200 square feet. The state law allows a city to prohibit short-term rentals, thirty, less than 30 days, that would be like an Airbnb or something like that. And so the draft ordinance that's before you does prohibit short-term rental of the ADU. As I mentioned, the city can restrict certain areas of the city from having ADUs permitted if there are specific health and safety reasons why that's the case. And the only situation that comes to mind for me is the high fire hazard zone, and the draft ordinance does not exclude that fire hazard zone from the area. So it would be basically a citywide ordinance.
John, does the existing ordinance, it's hard to read the, all the red line, does the existing ordinance allow second or accessory dwelling units to be used for Airbnb currently, or is that prohibited?
My recollection is that it's silent on that, but I, I would be willing to be corrected if anyone...
No, it's silent.
It's silent, okay.
It's silent, but he inserted something.
As well as the city is silent, the city is silent on that also, because that did come to council, and we let it remain silent on it, too. So this, this is another issue there that we would be putting on these properties and not putting them on other properties in there, too. Good find, though.
Yeah, I think we're on agreement that we try to be permissive.
Yes.
As much as possible.
Correct.
And not more restrictive than state requirements.
And with regard to utility connections, state law does allow cities or utility districts to require a separate utility connection for an accessory unit unless it is carved out from an existing home. But the draft ordinances before you is silent on that because whoever is the utility provider would be the one to make that determination consistent with state law. And so...
Can Todd, can you correct, correct me if I'm wrong? We haven't, we have a few homes that have a separate meter, but I don't believe that we've allowed the second dwellings to have separate meters. Do you recall the history of that? I know because I've received, I received complaints about the ones that do have separate meters, and how they got them. So that's why I'm asking for a little history on that.
All of you remember is that Edison is sometimes a little bit persnickety? And they do what they want to do, and they have certain criteria as to whether you can have a second one, and as to, within that geographic scope, there may be the potential for future connections. So it's very site-specific.
We don't have too many, and I always get the question about how did they get a separate meter, and the rest of us couldn't, so...
They probably knew someone.
Yeah, that's usually what I say. We might want a little bit of a, I might come back to you for a little background, or you can let us know about that.
Typically, Edison wants a, everybody to be on the same meter, if it's on a single parcel.
Here, it's been like that.
Edison only likes to put in meters, they only make them specific to certain individuals if there's nobody else really in the area that could potentially use it, or else it's always going to be a master meter that people can tie into, because they're incredibly expensive to put in, or dedicated lines and stuff like that. That's my experience. Usually, it's a problem in commercial developments, because you have all the different tenants, and people want their own, but...
And so to conclude, then, coming back to the rental issue, the choice that the council has is you must allow that one of the two be rented, and you may allow both of them to be rented. So that's, that's the choice. And then my, my final statement to you is that we have taken a fairly conservative approach to this ordinance, conservative in the sense of sticking to state, the state standard in most respects. And the thinking there is that because the state is going to be reviewing this ordinance, we would like to give them as few things to complain about as possible when they review the ordinance, and they, when they review our housing element the next time. So that concludes my presentation, and be happy to answer questions that you might have.
Do council members have any questions?
I do not.
Do, we need to, we need to make a motion to continue this to the first reading?
You need to give direction.
I still have a question. On, let's see, item I on page two of the red line markup, it says, when an accessory dwelling unit is constructed above an existing garage or other accessory structure, a minimum setback of five feet from any property line shall be provided. Most of our lots in Villa Park are E4 lots or state lots, so we have, like, side yard setbacks greater than five feet. This would not allow, as I read it, would not allow you on a E4 lot to encroach upon the existing setback? You'd have, still have to keep your existing setback for an E4 lot? Wouldn't be allowed to creep up to five feet?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
Then what do we do next?
Questions from the public?
Actually, the public, I might need your input on this. So Chad Zerman, I've spoken to you, former resident on Hammond Way. As I was reading this earlier today, there was another resident who had a question about section 23224, item I, which says, new accessory dwelling units shall not be located in any front, side, or rear yard. Where else do they go?
I don't, I don't have that.
Yard refers to the setback area, so there is a setback on the front, side, and rear.
So does that mean they, they can't go, they can go in the yard in those areas, just not in the setback? Okay, it was, it's very confusing reading that, and so I...
It's all in language, it's hard to do.
Right. So then, I think C, F, and L were the other ones, so I'm just kind of reviewing this real quick, but C is the, it says, if a lot already has a cabana, or another, you can't put it quick, but C is the, it says, if a lot already has a cabana or another, you can't put an, add an additional ADU? So if you have like a pergola or something like that, you can't add an ADU? Is that how it's, what you're intending it to do? Okay. That, that may be something you guys want to think about changing, maybe. I think F is the owner occupancy thing, and L was the short-term rental, so I think you guys have covered those too. Those are my comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Amanda?
Question also, if, let's say I live on a private street where the road is actually private and not considered Villa Park, I mean, is, am I able to build like a detached garage on it? Or?
This ordinance is not talking about garages, so whatever the, the existing rules about garages would still apply.
This is for accessory dwelling units.
Granny flats.
If I made it like a granny flat on top, like an apartment is my question.
So are you in the city of Villa Park?
I am.
Okay, so then there would be, you have property lines, right?
Yeah.
But it's a private street.
Right.
Okay, so.
I mean, hey to have it, hey.
Yeah, but normally, I used to live on a, a situation like that in North Tustin, where even though it's a private street, you have a property line. If it's a public street, the property line is, is at the right-of-way. So it would be, your property line would, you know, would be kind of where it would be if it were a public street.
Okay.
So she could build a accessory unit on top of her garage if other, as long as it conforms with other planning requirements and building requirements?
That's right, yeah. The fact that it's a private street would not change any of these rules in her case.
Okay, any other questions? From the public? Okay. Okay, council members, are there, is there any further discussion regarding this item? Is there a motion on the item?
Do you need direction, or do you need a motion? That's what my, my.
It doesn't really matter.
It's basically, the direction will be at this point, that this is the, first reading will be March 27. Is there specific items you want us to address as part of that draft? That's something that you can work right now and give us direction.
Okay. I, I propose that this come back to us as a first, as a first reading with some of the items that we've already discussed, and I think that it needs to be read a little bit more tightly. It's, it's much more, it's not as, it's not with the true spirit of Villa Park. I think that we need to compare these, this particular unit to our ordinances for our single-family residents. And that goes as far, as far as our setbacks are required, as far as parking's required. I think that we need to look at the two to make sure that they're, we're not imposing more upon this home that has a second dwelling than we are on the person who has just a single dwelling. For example, I don't need to, I don't, I don't, am not required to live in my home. I don't want to put the requirements of someone having to live on a piece of property that has a second dwelling. So we need to just compare all of the options on there.
I would, again, say that's in the current ordinance.
Correct, right.
If we want to change that, we need to sort of.
And we are, but we need the opportunity, now that I see, I see a few other things, so during the next month, we can point them out to you.
And the other item, I would say that parking is actually less restrictive than that, John.
Yes, yes it is.
By the state requirement, right.
Less restrictive than the current Villa Park requirements.
Correct.
So, and that's in compliance with state law.
That's with state law, because a half a mile from the bus stop.
So we are not imposing more restrictions, we're actually lessening requirements for needs, so that's what John's point is.
Is the word lot, is that the proper term where it speaks? It does speak about like where the second dwelling is going to be, and it refers to it as a lot. It is not a separate lot, though. Are you just referring, just using that as a term? Because that's something that a lot of people think, well, is it a separate address? Is it a, you know, it's not. It is still one piece of property, and it, and it can't be separated.
It cannot be subdivided.
It can't be divided, yes.
The accessory unit has to be on the same lot, the same parcel as the main house.
Right, because we do, I know that we have a few homes here who have tried to make like a second address. Some of them have kind of made a second address, and the post office delivers to a second address, so that's why I want to refer to what the word lot means when it comes here.
Could I ask that each of the council members, that except they have interested items, that they bring them to our attention, so we, individually, as long as you don't consult, provide me the data and I can bring it back?
Yes.
So I would, as part of the motion over the next month, if you could give me that item of concern, or area you'd like us to reverse to change, please bring that to my attention, and we get that incorporated.
Yep.
Yes.
That would be the direction.
And I, and I think the general direction again is that we support less permissive, or more permissive use of property.
Less restrictions.
Yeah, less restrictions.
Like, you know, not have to, not eliminate the requirements for residency on the, on the property and so forth.
And I think going forward, the state will appreciate that, because we're not putting rules and regulations about who can come into that property and who can't come into that property too, so.
So is that adequate direction?
That's, that's fine with me, if you can give me the.
Council comes.
All right.
At, at, sometime during the next month.
Got it.
Very good.
Next.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, John. Okay, the next public hearing is on the Animal Control Code amendments. Steph, please give the staff report.
This, this is our second reading, so this would be the formal adoption. You heard them first in January, and they are consistent with the county codes and definitional to those, so this would be the formal adoption this time to go into effect, it'll be 30 days after adoption, 30 days, 30 days after adoption tonight. So unlike the prior, this is where you're actually adopting the ordinance, and these are the same exact ordinance language that you saw in January. And Dr. Arden, who's here, will answer some questions at that time.
Okay, council members, do you have any questions of staff?
No.
Nope.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak at this hearing? If so, please step to the podium. Council members, is there any discussion regarding this item? Okay.
Make a motion.
Is there a motion?
I'll second.
So moved. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Please record your vote.
And that passes with a 5-0 vote.
And just to clarify, I mean, that was a motion to approve, right? I couldn't hear. Oh, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry. All right. Wake up, Doc.
Well, I, now it's on. Okay.
Okay. Let's see, public hearing item number six, our next hearing is the Conditional Use Permit 201801, a request for approval to permit the installation of one tri-sector small cell facility and two remote radio units to Southern California Edison Joint Pole Authority-owned replacement wooden utility pole located at the northwest corner of Taft and Center Drive within the public right-of-way or sidewalk near 9921 Center Drive. Staff, please give the staff report.
Okay, I will be letting Ray pass, while our planning manager handles, but for purposes of the applications, if it's possible, because the discussion on item number six and number seven are going to be the exact same discussions, so if we could have those at the same time, although you won't be required to take separate actions, we would ask that you, I would ask respectively that you look at item number seven, which is, if you're so inclined, to handle at the same time, and we have that discussion at the same time, and then we have separate actions taken eventually, but we, in an expedition manner, can have that discussion.
Okay, yeah, the next one is very similar to item six, it's for a Conditional Use Permit 201801, a request for approval to permit the installation of one tri-sector small cell facility and two remote radio units to Southern California Edison Joint Pole Authority-owned replacement wooden utility pole located at the northwest corner of Taft and Center within the public right-of-way near 17942 Villa Park Road. So we'll hear these both.
So these will be, item six and seven will be handled. Ray will go, go ahead and give the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. The first Conditional Use Permit application is a request to install a small cell wireless antenna and two remote radio units on a replacement wooden pole that is owned by SCE. The replacement pole is located within the public right-of-way on the sidewalk near 9921 Center Drive. Based on the plans that were submitted to city staff, the height of the existing wooden utility pole is approximately 33 feet, and the replacement pole is approximately 39 feet. The small cell antenna for this site is cylindrically shaped and will be on a horizontal extension arm mounted to the side of the new pole, approximately 32 feet as measured from the base of the pole to the top of the antenna. The small cell antenna is 24 inches tall and 15 inches in diameter. In addition to the small cell antenna, the site will also include a, the two remote radio units, which are metal boxes that are mounted to the side of the pole, approximately 22 feet as measured from the base of the pole to the top of these radio units. The dimensions of these radio units are approximately 20 inches tall, 18 and a half inches wide, 7 and a half inches deep. And all of the equipment that will be mounted onto this pole, including the extension arms and the brackets and so forth, will be painted to blend in with the pole. I'm going to shift gears to the next application, and it's basically the, the same type of equipment. And this replacement pole is located, again, in the right-of-way on the sidewalk near 17942 Villa Park Road. The plans that were submitted to the city staff indicates that the height of the existing wooden pole is approximately 32, 34 feet, and the replacement pole is the same as the other one, 30, about 39 feet tall. The small cell antenna for this site is also cylindrically shaped, and it will be mounted not on the side, but on the top of the pole, approximately 42 feet as measured from the base of the pole to the top of the antenna. It measures 24 inches tall and 15 inches in diameter. Additionally, this site will also include the two remote radio units. Again, it'll be mounted to the side of the pole, 37 feet as measured from the base of the pole to the bottom of these radio units. The dimensions of these radio units are the same as the other ones, 20, 20 inches tall, eight and a half, 18 and a half inches wide, and 7 and a half inches deep. And like the other one, all of the equipment will be painted so that it would be blended in with the, the pole. Included as part of both CUP application packages is a radio frequency report prepared by a consultant for Verizon Wireless, and based on this report, the proposed antennas will operate in accordance with FCC rules and regulations. And as noted earlier, and in the staff report, these applications were presented to the Community Development Committee, the CDC Committee, twice. First was on August 7, 2017, and just recently, February 5, 2018. Courtesy notices were mailed out for both of these meetings. During the August meeting, the committee members requested, and the applicant have since submitted a site analysis that explains the way, why this, these particular sites were selected and not others. This information should be included as part of your staff report. At the February meeting, the committee members reviewed and discussed plans with city staff, the applicant, and residents that live nearby this site, and later recommended that the applications be moved forward to a full city council for consideration. There was comments that although these applications be moved to city council, that there would be a recommendation to deny until such time, city, the city has zoning codes in place to consistently regulate these types of facilities, and also have a, a citywide master plan that identifies all of the wireless coverage gaps in the city. In response to these comments from CDC, city staff will begin drafting a wireless telecommunications facility ordinance. Also, Steve and I met with a company last week that can assist the city with the preparation of a citywide master plan for, again, identifying these coverage gaps. We are hoping to have these items scheduled for the next city council meeting. Both applications, for both applications, public hearing notices were mailed out to property owners within 300 feet of the addresses that were referenced in the CUP, and it was 10 calendar days before this meeting, and to date, staff has not received any comments for or against these items. And I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay.
The applicant is in the audience, I believe?
Correct.
In case you have any questions, just for fair.
Council members, do you have any questions of staff?
I do, right. So first, were both of these submitted in August?
Yes.
Okay, so, and why did it take so long to come back to February? What, just, what was in between that time?
I've been working with Josh Alba, who is a representative of Coastal Business Group, who's pushing this for Verizon Wireless, and he could, he could detail it a little bit more, but he's been pretty busy with other sites in other cities, and so they've circled back to this one. It's been a couple times now where he's had to circle back on this one, so we're, we're moving it forward now.
Okay, and you said that the, right now, we're writing an ordinance, and at what, whose direction was to write an ordinance?
I believe the council requested that we, I believe, Councilman Pitts, at the time, there was a previous item that we did approve, and he, at that time, he asked that we develop a citywide ordinance that would address this and a master plan as well, so we're moving forward with that council direction. I don't have the council date in mind.
That's okay, I just, just wanting a recollection at that, at that time. And there was public, the public also came to that CDC, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And their concerns were what?
The, the proximity to their residence, the aesthetics of it mainly.
Radio waves.
Radio waves.
Radio waves were another one, concerns for that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other council members have questions?
No.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak at this hearing? If so, please step to the podium. Okay, seeing none. Is there any further discussion regarding this item?
I just want to reiterate that we need a master plan, and I think Steve's working in that direction. These one-offs will continue to grow, and we just, we need to.
Provide some.
Focus, yeah, provide direction and in order of magnitude of what we expect, so.
Well, I agree. We went from one to now we have two.
Three.
You know, yeah, on the agenda.
Okay, is there a motion on this matter?
So, how should, we need to make two motions for a separate, as we talked about.
Okay, is there a motion on our, item number, agenda item number six, the conditional use permit.
I move, we reject, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I move, we reject it, conditional use permit. Yes, 201801.
I second.
Do you reject a pending completion of the studies?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
It's not forever, it's just wait until we get a master, part of the master plan.
So my understanding of the basis for it is that it's primarily, well, these currently aren't permitted in the zones that they're in, these types of uses, and there is both local potential aesthetic impacts that were brought up at the CDC meeting and been mentioned here again today, and the potential proliferation aesthetic impacts if there isn't a plan in place, which would result on the city if this particular project would be, be approved. And that also, as to the application of these types of projects within our own municipal code, once again, there is a lack of specific authority for these types of projects in our code, and at least until there is a plan in place for their specific. our code and at least until there is a plan in place for their specific locations within the city, which would authorize such use.
It's not rejected forever, it's just rejected at this point in time until we get a.
Just pending.
So what would, what I would suggest also, you know, based upon those findings, that it be rejected using terminology without prejudice?
Yes.
So that it can come back, because usually when something's rejected, it can't come back for a year. So everybody understands it's intended not to be a full rejection of the project, but to be potentially more temporary in nature.
Given the motion, what timeframe are we looking at to have this master plan complete?
I believe that Ray had indicated we're looking to come back with an ordinance in the next council agenda.
Okay, 'cause if, if it makes sense, why go through the motion again, why reject it? Why not just continue it till we have plans in place? I mean, no disrespect, I think your thought process is, is well-founded. We should have a master plan in place, but why reject it?
It is, you know, candidly, it is a public hearing, you can continue the public hearing until the next meeting, at which time you agendize prior, prior to the next, you ask us to come back and we would have an item on the next agenda, which we would allow you to not reject anything at this time, just consider, continue deliberation, if you will.
And that would be easier from a public, I apologize, Mayor. That would be easier from a noticing process.
That's where I'm going with this.
Because then we wouldn't have to notice again, it's, everything just flows.
Exactly.
From this hearing.
Well, I'd like to, I'll modify my motion to continue it till the next council meeting.
I have a question, though. These are being put on Southern California Edison poles.
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Do they need our permission?
They would say they don't.
Yes and no.
They would say they don't.
I understand that, that's why I'm asking the.
I take a different position.
As do other cities.
As do other cities. There are some, they would say we don't have the authority to do any of this. I don't agree with that. That's all I really want to say.
But we're going to have, we're moving expeditiously to getting a plan and so it's just a matter of waiting a couple of weeks to, or a month or so to get that in order and ready to go.
It evolves to an analysis sort of, of what's a public utility and what's allowed under the California Constitution in the public right of way. And there's dispute on that in the courts.
So Southern California Edison wanted to put a banner on their pole, would it fall under the same?
That is not a utility use.
Right, exactly. It's the use that's significant.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion?
So just to be clear, we're continuing it for another month.
If we continue to March 27th specifically, that's the day of the next council meeting.
Okay.
And is this on both or one?
No, just one.
And we'll take the second action.
What, all the motion is to continue it. It's not contingent upon anything, the motion is only to continue.
Continue the public hearing until March 27th.
Thank you.
Okay, if we're all clear on the motion and the second, let's vote.
This is for item number six, CUP 2018-01.
Yeah, if we can read the motions in complete.
This would be.
In the future, that would be great.
Okay, to continue the current public hearing on conditional use permit 2018-01 until March 27th, 2018.
Thank you.
Regularly scheduled council meeting.
Thank you.
Very good, okay. The next item is.
Well, we need, have we voted?
Yes, we have.
Okay, it's past 5:00 here.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Now, the second one, which is agenda item seven or?
Agenda item seven would be to continue the public hearing on conditional use permit number 208, 2018-02 until March 27th, 2018, at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
Okay, do we have same motion?
Same motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, let's.
Who moved that? Who moved that?
I did.
I seconded.
Councilman Pitts moved it. And that passes 5:00.
Okay, our last hearing is safe and sane fireworks sales. Staff, please give the staff report.
Okay, this, item number eight, is a follow-up to report that was provided in August, or September of 2017. You recall, the fireworks ordinance requires a report on annual receipts and whatnot of the nonprofits that have been granted temporary sales permits. At that time, we indicated there were a number of concerns that were expressed relative to the use of some of the fireworks and some of the problems encountered with illegal fireworks, candidly. So subsequent to that meeting, I have spent some time working with the respective groups and have the sales and I've worked with the, both to talk to the fire authority and to the Orange County Sheriff's Department. So we have developed basically what would be recommended as four recommended strategies for you for the consideration, which would be, first of all, a coordinated oversight and inspection efforts of temporary firework stands. Basically, right now, the fire marshal and I inspect, the fire marshal is here, Kevin Bass from Fire Authority, and myself or my staff inspect, but we do it at different times. I don't know what he's done, he doesn't know what I've done, so we can coordinate that much better. So it's a, it's a minimal effort, but it's something that needs to be done and it would make it a lot easier for both the temporary users and for us, so that we're all in concert on that. So that's our first step, first recommendation. Second would be development of an enhanced public education program, specifically what is or is not allowed, there are illegal fireworks, and what illegal fireworks constitute is, it's a crime, the use of illegal fireworks is a crime, illegal for a reason. So what we've talked to is we would develop a use of social, more aggressive social media program, post signs for the city, what's not allowed, safe and sane means, things, we would hand a flyer out to all those people using safe and sane fireworks, put flyers, potentially work with all the vendors, I'm sorry, all the merchants in town center, and do, try and do a better job of educating on our social media and those types of things and what's allowed. So from an enhanced public education program, we're also thinking too, is candidly, to the extent where we know we have some issues, where we could possibly use some of the sheriff cadets to provide information throughout the community, the PSRs or whatever, whoever the groups might be, to help us get some information out to the public where it's targeted, where we know we might have a problem. So again, that's, it's a very minimal cost, but something that could, could improve, a lot of it's just information. I mean, it's, it is a crime and I don't know that I would want to be caught. In fact, with fireworks, it's, it's more dangerous to be caught with fireworks anymore than it is with drugs in California. A true statement from the sheriff. Anyway, the, the third element then is, given that they are illegal, we talked about increased law enforcement presence. Now, originally, we talked to them and said, the sheriff, and they said, you know, look, Steve, you're a two mile, square mile city, but you only have one black and white that's rolling at any given time. If we had more presence, we're going to have less likelihood, you know, people aren't going to be firing off illegal fireworks if they know they're going to be, have someone out there and potentially citing them. So we talked about somebody, a deputy, for eight hours for a week before and then eight hours that week after, and we kind of talked, talked about it. The real problem dates are July 3rd, 4th, and 5th, that tends to be the real, if you will, party dates. So what we talked about is having two additional deputies for eight hour shifts on all three of those days. So what is that, I don't, my math is not, 48 hours. I'll catch up with myself, 48 hours. And we talked about that with the sheriff and they said, that's fine. The cost of that is about $82.32 per hour for 48 hours, translates out to approximately $4,000, I'm rounding here for purpose of that back of the envelope. But that's $4,000 that we don't, you know, necessarily have $4,000 budget for that. So one of the things I did is I talked to those who, owners of the nonprofits who run the temporary stands and said, you know, look, part of this is, onus is on you, you know, if we weren't selling fireworks, we wouldn't have some of these issues. And we, but, but there's a benefit to the city as well, because increased law enforcement presence increases less likelihood of vehicles driving around illegally or drunk driving, it, you know, it's, it's going to be less potential property crimes and things. So we, I said, I'll split the difference. You guys will pay half, we pay half. So what we proposed is we would increase the, the permit fee from 1,000 to 1,700. So if we have three stands, that's three stands, $700 each, that would be $2,100. So we're just about, we're right about at a halfway mark, they're paying, we would pay about $1,900, the city, but we get a benefit as well, because we truly do, that is a party time, so people driving and those things, it's a much more, having three officers on night, I know it would make me feel better around the 3rd, 4th, and 5th. So that would be the recommendation and the last item would be to, right now, we allow, under the current ordinance, allows us to begin fireworks, June, sales on June 28th, 29th through July 4th. We talked to a number of the other cities that are doing it, Santa Ana does four days, for instance, Anaheim does seven. So we sort of said, you know, look, part of the problem is once you start selling them, they're going off and it creates sort of a, you know, the nightmare. They're not supposed to be discharged until July 4th, but it's hard to say to somebody who bought them on June 28th, you're going to hold until July 4th, et cetera. So we talked about that. So our proposal here is to eliminate two of those days, June 28th and June 29th, so leaving the authorized number of days at five, June 30th through July 4th. What that does is instead of just doing the four days in July, it allows us to make sure we always hit a weekend. So there's always a weekend that they have sales that they can get done. So we never, you're never going to get a period where you're not going to have a weekend. The issue there, I think, is it allows us to reduce the number of exposure and it just, it helps us in the process. Again, we talked to the firework stands and I want to say, they weren't excited about it, but they reluctantly said, they understood what we're trying to get to here and they're in this together. So they, they did, I will give them credit. They, they weren't volunteering, in fact, at the very end, there were still people saying, well, let's just negotiate that one at the very end. And I said, that's non-negotiable, unless we reduce the days, we're not going anywhere. So after some push and pull, I think that the, the participants in the firework stands and ourselves recognize that some changes need to happen. The, the, the measure that was approved by the voters allows the council to make these changes without having to go back to the voters. So we can make administrative changes like with respect to the fee and with respect to days of sale and any other conditions without a problem. So we're recommending basically the adoption of those four strategies. Along with that, we would change, we recommend the adoption of a resolution, which would change our fee structure, because the fee will be, starting to adopt it in April 1st is when they open. So to allow these people to plan, you know, what their budget will be, they, we need to get that approved. And then it would be the first ordinance, first reading of the ordinance to reduce the number of days from seven to five. So that would be the recommended action today. Sorry for the long-winded explanation, but it's been a pretty laborious process and I think we're all committed to trying to improve and make safe and sane fireworks. The fire marshal is here, he and I talked yesterday, I think, again, and he said, yeah, we're, we're 100% with you. So our public education improvement program will work with Fire Authority, which I believe they have tons of material that we can help get out. And the sheriff is more than happy to accommodate and, and work with us on the law enforcement issue. So that's our, my report and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Do you have any council members, do you have any questions of staff?
No many questions, some comments. I have worked extensively on this and certainly was, was part of getting this back into Villa Park and I have to commend the negotiations between you and the volunteer organizations because, you know, they don't want us to take away, you know, those firework stands and we're not going to do that. So I do commend both sides talking. I think this is a win-win situation for everybody. Having worked every stand, last year I worked the Rotary, I rotated myself through all of them. Those first two days, it is, you don't do that much in sales, it's difficult to man those stands. Some of the groups do have the ability to man them all the time, Band is certainly one of them that does in Rotary, but with the schools, it's very difficult to do that and I think that we're not going to take any money away from them. I do encourage the, the fee increase, although I would have liked to have seen it go up. So you guys did some heavy-duty negotiations and getting Steve Franks to come down, because I was a proponent of having it go up quite a bit more. But negotiations is how it works, so thank you very, I just want to say thank you very much for working with the city to do that. We want to continue this tradition, it's something that we want, we just want to make sure that it's done safely. And we're all aware that our problem is not the safe and sane fireworks. Our problems are the bottle rockets that go off and it has nothing to do with those stands, but unfortunately, the complaints and that do come to the city and the work that law enforcement has is because of those illegal fireworks. And then you do get people who get gun shy and don't want anything at that point. So we're going to make our best effort to get some police officers out there, certainly if the council agrees, to this, and encourage that if anyone sees anything and people using these fireworks illegally, that you do call the sheriff. And you call them on June 28th and on June 30th and on July 1st. And you need to, we need to encourage our residents that if they see something illegally being done, that they do call on that, because we don't want this wonderful celebration to go wrong. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Is there anyone, any other members here of the council that'd like to speak on this item?
I would, I, I don't agree with all of this, because I think we're penalizing the safe and sane fireworks, as she indicated, for people who, who are doing the wrong thing. The, the other thing too, I agree with the additional presence of the sheriff, but at the same time, we've got to make sure that we write citations and if necessary, arrest people for illegal fireworks and things like that, because I know for a fact that things were going off in this city that didn't belong in this city. And they weren't safe and sane fireworks that I sold over here with the Rotary Club, I can tell you that. So I think we've, we're doing something here to penalize those groups that are working hard to keep it that way, but, you know, it just, to be, you know, we're reducing the number of days, that penalizes them. We, we give them a fee, that penalizes them. But everybody else still comes into city and fires off fireworks that are illegal. So I, I just say that increased police presence will help, writing citations, and if necessary, arrest somebody for doing it. Because the illegal ones are the ones that are going to cause the problem, not one that shoots off 12, 18 inches off the ground. And I'm okay too, if we shrink the timeframe when people are allowed to shoot fireworks off, because I think that's some contention too for people, is that, that people are constantly firing, you know, going, doing fireworks, but most of those are illegal too. So.
Okay, any other comments from council?
No.
I, no, I had just one comment. I like everything you put here, except I would have charged a full amount of them to, to the fireworks people. After all, they're making over $80,000 a year and we get, allows you $3,000 out of the whole deal.
And I would, I would, I had started that position, Councilman Fasenelli twisted my arm a lot on that one, but I candidly, I thought, you know, there is a lot of partying and there's a lot of activities and there are DUIs and things like that, the streets are safer with more black and whites on the streets. The city residents who don't have anything to do with fireworks benefit as a result of the black and whites.
Yes, I agree with that.
So I think the city does candidly benefit from, so, so to charge the fireworks is sort of like to me saying, you're, you're completely responsible and I don't think that was completely fair. So I was sort of like, okay, I can meet you in the middle of the year and that was my logic. And I certainly understand what you're saying, but I would offer too, that I don't have any problem charging them, because we do get complaints of safe and sane fireworks going off on June 28th, 29th, 30th. You know, we get them going all the time and that's against the ordinance as well. And so I, I do understand the reluctance, it is, you know, it is a money-making for the nonprofits, they're largest non-money maker, I understand that, but I don't want the, you know, the, the number of complaints you can start seeing increase, I talked to my predecessor, he says, you got more than I did complaints and I, I see what, I talked to Councilman Fasenelli and you can see there's, you know, we don't want to create a situation where the complaints become more than the people that are supportive and we, we end up with a bigger problem down the road and with, you know, sort of the, the golden egg is lost for all. So I think we're trying to make some efforts and I think the firework stands, I want the commitment from them, those groups, they're benefiting from fireworks sales, that they're in this together with us, so to the extent that they can influence their neighbors, their participants to, to do the right thing, that's something important to me. So I think the buy-in is important from my perspective. I don't think when they're making 80,000 to 700 is all that punitive, candidly, it's in, so I'm, I'm not overly worried about it, but I, but I do understand their concerns as well. So I mean, I'm trying to be respectful and meet a midway, that was my point.
Okay.
Chad's here, if I think he may want to.
If there, if there's anyone here to speak at this hearing, please step to the podium.
Hey there. Chad Zimmerman, Rotary. So I wanted to say a couple of things. First is that this process has been very well-handled by Steve Franks, the ability to find common ground. I think the comments are right that we, you know, I think the way that it was framed is that we don't see this as punitive, we see it as part of the community helping out and, you know, paying extra to provide the additional support. I did want to say that in the particular case of Rotary, we're a charitable organization and all of our money does go right back into this Villa Park community. So penalizing doesn't really make sense in make sense in that the money's just going to go back to community programs and stuff anyway, reminding that. I think that the comments made by Councilwoman Chairman Fassinelli about the dates and the reminding us that the safe and saints fireworks aren't really the problem, something very important to reinforce. We think that by selling five days instead of seven, we may see that we'll continue to get the complaints at the seven-day mark. And because the complaints do relate more to the illegal fireworks. And so, maybe we'll see that at the fire, if we've, even though we've reduced it to five days, we still get the complaints, maybe we'll go back to seven days. It's not the safe and sane that's the problem. Or maybe we see that it makes a difference. I think this is a great step in analyzing, trying to figure out the problem and work with our community to make things better. So, thanks for all your input and your help, and particularly to Mr. Franks.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers from the public? Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and staff. My name is John Kelly. I'm vice president with TNT Fireworks, who is the wholesale distributor of a majority of locations throughout Southern California. And just here this evening, a couple of observations. I brought along with me, as I noticed, that safety and education is a component of, if your program going forward. I'll leave these, I bear gifts. These are DVDs that have 30-second spots and that have two eight-minute spots that would be appropriate for your government channel to begin running, you know, just as soon as you saw fit, probably after Father's Day. The two eight minutes, one deals with the proper use of state-approved fireworks. It's a professionally shot. We produced, we wrote the script, produced it, and put it out there. But I will point out that it is endorsed by the California State Fire Marshal and CDF. So, you won't, you won't see any advertisement for TNT fireworks on any of these. It's strictly a safety message, a backyard setting on the proper use of our product. The illegal eight-minute video deals with a father and son who decide to go out and shoot some illegal fireworks and the consequences thereof, and ends up in a police station, actually, after their arrest. So, I would leave these, submit these to the staff.
Thank you.
Secondly, you know, a lot of discussion kind of on both sides with respect to covering costs for law enforcement. I would just throw out, I don't know specifically what your fine procedures are here under Senate Bill 839, which was passed in 2008. It codifies at a state level, a city's ability to issue administrative fines. Possession under 25 pounds bears a $1,000 cost. And it escalates on up to there. If you found a garage full, where you can start delving into some serious $10,000, $25,000 fines, some asset forfeitures, et cetera. And I would encourage you perhaps to take a look at that. And while it's difficult, I know that you have an enforcement arm, and it sounds like you're planning on additional enforcement. I would encourage you, other cities have done this, but I would encourage you to certainly track that progress. And how many citations are you issuing? And if you do, down the road, go to a $1,000 fine, you know, I know it's difficult to earmark administrative fines for specific because I believe that they go into the general fund, but that does help to perhaps offset some of the additional costs for enforcement. Talking about the coordination of the inspections of stands, just, gentlemen, to share with you, I'm a resource. I have a pretty good idea of when that stand is going to go up and when the product's going to get delivered. So, we would certainly like to be included in the loop there with respect to that. So, with comment with respect to the shortage, decrease in the days, I think the statements here are absolutely right. Anyone that's worked in a fireworks stand before, there's a rush for about the first 30 minutes on the first day that you open, then it's pretty quiet. We get a lot of nervous people calling our office during that point in time. With some of the challenges that some nonprofit organizations are facing with manpower and ability to staff, our statistics show that you're probably not going to see a decrease in revenue if you cut off the two days on the front end. I would leave you with this. The 4th of July falls on what day this year? Pop quiz? Wednesday. So, your 5th is going to be on a Thursday. So, I don't know that that falls into the same category as maybe a Saturday, Sunday, or a three-day weekend-type deal with respect to evaluating how things went. But I would just throw that as. And there is one time every seven years when, when you are on the 30th to the 4th, Monday through Friday, that you don't get the weekend in there, but we can cross that bridge when we come to it. We appreciate the privilege very much of wholesaling in your community. And if there are anything that we as a company can do, I'm available. You have my contact information on record. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak? Okay, see none. Council members, is there any discussion regarding this item?
I just want to, I believe our fine is a thousand dollars. Am I correct?
It's $500. The administrative fine is $500. If the sheriff arrests you, that's a different ballgame.
Boy, that's a whole different ballgame, yes.
Okay. Is there a motion on this item?
I'll move the staff's recommendation, all three of them. Can I move them all three at once? All three.
It's been moved and seconded. Please record your vote.
That passes with a 4-0 with one abstention. That would be Councilman Pitt's abstain. Again, that's the second, the second reading of that ordinance comes back on March 27th.
Council's now been meeting for almost four hours. Would you like to take a short recess?
Yes, please.
So, we'll take a 10-minute recess. We'll be back at five minutes till the hour.
Thank you.
All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council, staff, or the public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Council members, are there any items you would like to remove from the consent calendar? Let's see, I guess we need a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
Second. Okay. Is there any further discussion? Then please vote.
If that passes, we order one vote and then Councilman Passon will vote.
Okay. Now we move on to new business. First item of new business is the mid-year budget review. Staff, please give the staff report.
First of all, if I want to congratulate Frank for the shortest staff report that I've seen.
I like your style.
Learning the tricks of the trade real quick. Anyway, I've asked Frank to give an update. I would like to preface this that Villa Park is a very small community. We have, you know, what we joke around with the other city manager, we're rounding your error to the other cities around us. But we are, what we do is very important to the city. Our largest expense is public safety, between forty and fifty percent of our budget goes toward that. And our focus is really the preserving the quality of life and the Villa Park community. So you'll see that's sort of what we do here. It's a small, we have very limited amount of discretionary money. But I want to make the point that that's something that is very important for you all to keep in mind as we make decisions, that we don't have the money to do a lot of what we want to do. So I would allow Frank to give you basically his presentation. I think we try to give you time.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Frank Davies, Finance Director. Excuse me. Just wanted to give a presentation, a brief presentation on how we're looking as far as the budget mid-year through December. This summary page shows that we are doing well. I do have some explanations on some of the percentages. But with regards to expenditures, salaries, and employee benefits, you know, right around forty, forty-four percent. The other items, expenditure items, at thirty-one percent. Revenues were...
Just that for context, we would expect a fifty percent mid-year, so to be forty-four, we're well within our budgeted amounts for both of those.
But I guess this reflects that we still have some major paving projects coming up?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, in the next slide, you'll be able to see that.
And some flowers to be planted.
The one thing I would like to mention, too, is that there are some items that, mainly on the revenue side, that the city has received but have not been recorded or posted yet into our general ledger system. And I'll explain a little bit of that once I get to that slide. So here, I apologize for the detail, but that's what accountants work on. I just wanted to kind of go over some of the items that are, you know, fifty percent or higher. The one item, building chamber maintenance at, oh gosh, I have to use my own glasses, sixty-four percent. I looked at those expenditures, and there were a couple items there, such as a gas leak repair and backflow testing, that, you know, increased the expenditures beyond the fifty percent that you would think of. You know, one-time items like that are going to push it up, and hopefully, you know, we won't have anything the rest of the year. Professional services and the audit. The audit was completed, so there should be nothing in addition to that line item for this year. That was for, you know, the sixteen-seventeen financial report. Utilities are a little bit higher with regards to electricity and water. And looking at those expenditures related to the civic center area, not quite sure if there's more usage. Again, it's relative to what the budget was developed, you know, almost a year ago, so...
One of the things, too, is the air conditioning system typically has run twenty-four-seven years. So now when we start, I just started shutting down at night, sort of what happened from my dad. But anyway, I think that's sort of some of the things we're looking at, and we need to look at some efficiencies that we can do around here, lights that go off when you leave the room, those kinds of things. So we need to do some more of that kind of thing. And, you know, candidly, some of the groups, you know, we leave lights on and things like that, we need to be conscious and make sure that that stuff's done automatically during...
Well, can't we set the thermostats so they come on and off at certain times of the day?
We'd have to change the thermostat, but yes, we can. Those typically don't have that.
Oh, okay.
We'll have to set those. Yeah, we could do some of that. There's a lot more that we can do relatively inexpensive, but we've got to make some conversions of it because that's one of the things we're going to do on utilities.
Steve, you have a good point when you do say that. It's difficult when you have to go out the front door because you can't see.
Right.
You turn off the light and you can't see. And so the lights are on a lot during the night for that because...
And there's electricity bill and there's things on.
I mean, that's little in the big scheme of things.
You know, one of the, I'll be, my brain's up. One of the things I want to talk about is that we do not charge the library for utilities under the agreement. But I, we're going to meet with the librarian, and that's one of the things I'm going to talk about, is, you know, they have a rent-free lease, but they use up a lot of our utilities candidly because they run over the weekends. They run, you know, on Saturday, they're here all day. And so there's some expenses that we need to sort of, sort of look at and say, where's the appropriate expenditure of those things? We're one of the few rent-free leases that the County of Orange has for libraries, most of them pay utilities. So, I mean, those are things we can negotiate, we can get done. Having my prior life, I can tell you that. It was a very good deal, whoever negotiated it here. But they got to keep a library, so that's really important. It's typically a smaller library than most. But I think there are some things we can arrange, and there's some things, without bankrupting anybody, but helping us around about a couple thousand here, a couple thousand there.
But that's on your to-do list. It has been now for a year about the maintenance of the...
Well, we're doing a lot of the maintenance of the year.
And charging the groups and stuff.
Where, in fact, you will be seeing a room rental for this being adjusted. Both Twee and Eileen are working on that. And in the next, next council meeting or the one after, then we'll have something back for you at that point.
What's the building chamber maintenance? Why is that over fifty percent? Does something drive that? And do we need to move funds around to make sure we cover the rest of the year okay?
That's what he just said.
Yeah, there were a couple items. One was a gas leak repair.
And the gas leak, if you recall, out by Mike, there's a gas valve that had to be replaced, that, believe it or not, that place, there used to be some gas, there was propane and, not propane, but...
Natural gas.
Natural gas out there, that they had to shut down. And so Mike was arranging it, but there was an expense, we had to reset the valves and re, you know, they cap it off and do something.
Okay, I didn't know that.
And remove it. So there was an expense there that is again, one time, like Frank said, that we don't anticipate recurring.
Okay, that's fine.
And that was about eleven hundred dollars, so a good expense. And as you mentioned, Mayor, there are some of the capital project items that haven't come through yet near the bottom of the chart there. So those will be obviously looking, you know, against the budget as well. The next slide is with regards to revenue. And, you know, we look low with regards to revenue, only nineteen percent. The majority of revenue is property tax. And speaking from my prior life, I know that, you know, we're still looking good there. The problem that this reflects is that the property tax with regards to the second installment, which is over seven hundred thousand, almost eight hundred thousand, was received by the city but not booked, again, into the general ledger system. So, you know, I have comfort there that we did receive it, and it will be reflected, you know, with regards to revenue. So there should be no problem with that. One other item, or a couple other items, I just want to point out, there's a property transfer tax. That's at ninety-five percent. This property transfer tax is the city's allocation of recording fees that the county receives with regards to properties that transfer ownership. And so this really reflects a high activity because we're already at ninety-five percent of the budget. So in some ways, it's encouraging. We're seeing that activity, which then results in, you know, property tax also being increased with assessed values reflecting the market rate and supplemental property tax coming in as well.
So I think what you're saying is there's a robust market happening for us, and we're feeling it. And that's sort of going to help us in the long run because houses get reappraised on sale price.
Right.
You know, so many of these long-term residents or people who've been here and sell their houses, then, you know, the above thirteen changes that dramatically in the assessment and valuation. So I think we'll benefit there. So I think that's sort of...
Right, exactly.
Good.
The other item, I just want to point out, interest. We're at ninety-two percent of what was budgeted. So, you know, that reflects just better interest rates that are being experienced with regards to, you know, investments and especially with Councilman Nelson's leadership on the Investment Advisory Committee. We're looking good there.
What is TCR loan repayment?
That relates to the traffic congestion relief. I, that's something I had not had a chance to look into, but I can, I can look into and get back to you.
Yeah, no hurry.
Okay. That's basically my presentation, if there's any other questions.
Could you send that to us?
This presentation?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Please, thank you.
I have a question, not related to the budget, but it's a financial question. I got an email this morning from Rick Barnett that he got from John Morlock. Did you get that email about how Villa Park had...
It was from three of the council members. Yeah, the, John Morlock does the calculation of unrestricted net assets. Basically compares your debt to your, what your resources, you know, what your debt is and what your amount of your assets are. And then he divides it per capita by your population to become over the per capita number. You don't want a negative, which means you'd be in debt, obviously, if you don't want to be in that situation. We are in a positive. However, we have slipped in our...
Nine places, right.
Nine places. You need to keep in mind, we have, as, oh, we'll catch the light between. The county, I mean, sorry, the city has not incurred any additional debt. So that's not an issue for us going on. We didn't go out and get debt or issue debt or loans or whatever. The city since two thousand and ten has done a, the retirement, you know, calculation for the unfunded liability has been redone. Additionally, on top of that, you have the calculation of, the calpers has changed, you know, the rate, the discount rate that they're charging us. So our positioning has dropped only because the amount of debt we have unfunded liability, we have the, basically, the retirement calculations have changed for us. And that's sort of really...
So that's net of unfunded liability?
Yeah, that will be the net.
But it makes it look like Villa Park's doing a terrible job financially, so it's a drop in...
We have not, it incurs your debt, so it's a comparison of your debt to your liabilities basically versus your assets. The city doesn't, you know, we have a very healthy reserve. We're just about fifty percent, forty-nine, forty-eight percent at reserve, so we're in a healthy position. They haven't incurred additional expenses or things. One of the things that I think that you'll see is our position will improve as we move forward and put money in the Section 115 trust.
Right.
Because that will be recorded as an asset to reduce against, so that will help us against that offsetting unfunded liability. So we'll start seeing some improvement on the books. This is based on our CAFR reports. So it doesn't catch up with us for, what, two years?
Right.
So if we're going to put it in plain terms, our fiscal prudence has not changed in the negative. If anything, it's gotten better with the 115 trust. But Calpers, with all due respect, is doing a worse job, or perhaps is finally coming clean with where they're at with the real numbers.
Well, to full disclosure, you're right. And reducing the discount rate on the contributions as, you know, we do the calculations and they're going to, Calpers continues to reduce, I think they're going down to seven point two five.
Yeah.
From seven point five or whatever. And as that drops, a small city like us is going to affect us.
It's a huge impact.
We haven't added employees, we haven't added...
Right.
But I wonder why it affected us so much more than other cities? Why wouldn't other cities have gone?
It affects our position relative to what other cities have done. That's what, that's what the change is showing. So we drop our own positions. It's not that we changed what we're doing, it's that other cities contextually could have changed around us as well. So I can't account for what everyone else has done. They may put monies aside, they may have paid off debt. The County of Orange, for instance, is a really good example, they paid off all their bankruptcy debt. So their numbers are going to look a lot better than they looked two years ago.
I'm not a statistician, but I would think that, kind of like our crime statistics, small changes, in this case, the Calpers discount rate would have a huge impact. Whereas if we had one or two crimes in different categories, we would have a hundred percent or two hundred percent, whatever, increase.
So the actuarial valuation, you recall, was done, I want to say, between two thousand and ten and now. So that actuarial valuation was done, I don't know when was that, my time, probably in the last four years maybe?
Yeah, it was, it was like twenty, it was like twenty thirteen.
So that goes into calculation, and that jump, as you recall, jumped us a lot.
Yeah.
So when you did the actuarial valuation, all of a sudden, it looks like, oh, you guys got more debt. Well, we don't have really any more debt, it's how you calculate where we work.
Correct.
So, I mean, that's what we need to keep in mind.
One person I had, though, is, he says unrestricted net assets. Does that mean he takes out our...
He takes out, we have all our obligations and pledged...
No, I'm talking about reserves. Does he take out our reserves?
No, that reserves is not...
That's, that's, that's considered unrestricted net assets?
So if you had pledged bonds, money for bonds or reserves, like, I want to say this, for instance, the, and I'm, again, I go back to the county experience, or Frank knows this, too. When the county pledged money on bond, or when they, when they, they had to pledge money toward payoff of those bonds, so they had to guarantee revenues. So those don't count as assets because you already locked them up. They don't, they're not what they're free use. What we're talking about is, you know, what you have available to spend. So again, we have a, we're in a favorable position. We may not be as favorable as we compared because of the rate, the thing, the context around us, but it's all the more reason we need to continue to be prudent and fiscally conservative in the way we do.
It's just that still, it makes us look very bad because it shows us dropping nine, nine places, and the next person is like four, three or four places.
But when you read the report, it doesn't make us look bad. I mean, I got the same email, and I called it, you know, as a scare tactic, you got to read the report, you can't just look at the headlines.
Well, there are some cities, I mean, I keep in mind, there are some cities in Orange County that have a negative number.
Yeah.
We're, we're, you know, I mean, we're very solvent, we're in a good financial position.
Yes.
Frank reiterated that, I think that's what's really, really important. The context in which, the world in which we live affects us a lot. So we're improving our interest rate collections, for instance, that's been really good. But when you start seeing numbers drop and, you know, if, like, Calpers is talking about dropping the discount rate to six percent, you will not, you will see a lot of cities dropping really badly, and our position looking a lot better because we only have a small number of employees. You know, I mean, it, you know, a small number makes a big difference for a city like us, where it doesn't make a difference for, you know, some of these others, they'll round and, you know, that type of thing. So there's a lot to be said for that. There's a, it gives you a very, it's a good indicator, it kind of tells you what you're doing. But I think what we need to report, like, as Councilman Passon, they said, you need to keep the whole, what we're doing here, because if you really dig into it, we haven't incurred debt. We're doing things to reduce our unfunded liability. So we're doing those things conservatively that we need to, to maintain or improve our position. I guess that's the message I would try and...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Are there any other questions from the council, from the public? Okay.
I did have another question. I think, Steve, you said you were going to have quarterly financial reports?
Yes, we did. And candidly, this is Frank's thirtieth-plus day or forty-third day on the job, so I'm sort of a friendly kind of slack, but we will be...
We will be doing that in the future.
Yeah, he just, candidly, he's going in, he was, within his first, he's gone through two audits already?
Well, really, well, yeah, just one. State controls report, which was a bear, and we're currently going through a Measure M2 audit. So I've been trying to catch up, and I apologize for any reports that haven't been done, but we'll get back on track.
Frank, when, when do we go out for bids on the auditors?
We're actually starting to develop an RFP list. So I would imagine some time next month, we'll send that out.
Okay.
And...
Wonderful, thank you.
It'll be in time for, the selection will be in time for our next slide.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Okay. Entertained a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Okay, please vote.
Should we vote for receive and file? We don't vote. Yeah.
Okay, well, now we'll discuss the city manager report. Steve?
Well, I mean, we have the report here. I think we continue to modify the report. You'll start to see a lot of red. Councilman Pitts has suggested that we add some additional costs and contract costs and things. So as numbers are being developed, I mean, I'm not making this the priority to do, but we're adding it as a good intervention so that you can make informed decision. We are trying to check off, but the red numbers continue to grow, and which means we have things to do, and there's a whole last page of things.
Fifty-five. Fifty-five red ones.
So I'm not bored.
Fifty-five? Fifty-five red?
Yeah.
Couple of things I just want to mention is that the staff, we're working on things and projects, will be continuing to update this and give you more detailed numbers. So when you see things that say pending RFP response, that... So when you see things that say pending RFP response, that's, you know, we'll give you numbers and start filling in those. Or right now, we're getting, the other thing on the estimating staff hours, I'm trying to give you a range, because there's, you know, we we figure roughly what the projects order magnitude are going to do. I I can't give you exactitude, I don't want to get to that point, because I'm going to spend more time trying to figure it out than I would be doing something.
I think you've been conservative.
I am being very careful.
Yes.
And I know that, but at the same time, little experience will help us fill things out. So a couple of things that we are looking at, I just wanted to let you know, on the council chambers, we'll be looking at here, I've got an estimate, will be our, you notice our, whatever you want to call it, it's pretty old.
Projector.
Screen projector is is needs to be, it's antiquated, so we'll be replacing that, we're looking at that. And one of the other things I'm doing, Councilman Pitts, when I first got here, you talked about a wall, one of the things on the back wall here, we have these shelves that have, I realized over last year, what they do is they collect a lot of dust and a lot of quality goo. So this weekend, those shelves will be removed, but the cabinets will be staying below them. We'll put a cabinet top on them that is waterproof and can have served food, so the Rotary and those groups that use food will not have to bring tables in here. This weekend, you'll start seeing.
Wonderful.
And then on the wall, Councilman Pitts, you see a memorial to, on one side, the armed services, and the other side, we're putting a former councilman.
Thank you.
So we haven't haven't lost track of it, I just wanted to do that in a way that makes sense.
That's fine.
One of the other things that the people have come out and said, if you're changing projectors, and I know the mayor has talked to me how to, the screen always takes out our our seal, every time the screen is down, we do that. So we may be, depending on what I can do, we have some monies that are set aside for this, we might be putting in screens on both sides that are very similar to these screens up here, which will make it easier for you to see. And we'll remove that screen that comes down each time, and we'll automate some of this turning lights on and things like that, so somebody here. The thing I'm trying to work on is make sure this stuff is durable, because I don't want to replace it every two years, I don't, and there's a lot of groups that use it. So we're we're working on it, and I've got some bids, and I'm working out to try and upgrade the quality of what we have in here, but at the same time, do it in an affordable and economic way that gives us some durability. So you'll see some changes starting to happen here, all within budget, all within, you know, like the walls, I think this, we'll prove the lighting in here and things like that, and get you some monument, like I said, the monument that was asked for a year ago. And I can check off that off my list as well, but.
It's amazing, it's amazing what the.
I wanted you to know that will be happening.
Well, Steve, like, for example, I'm looking back here, and I see coffee cups and stuff, I mean, which is, you know, it it's inappropriate to be there, we have a council meeting going on, and and I don't know what group, so I'm not blaming anybody, but it happens often, they just leave it here.
It's funny, I I sort of tested, if you remove it from that bottom shelf, it's funny, the next week it appears on the top shelf.
Oh, okay.
So you really got to get rid of the shelves.
I mean.
You've got to make a flat top counter that can be just cleaned off, like, for instance, Rotary.
Those chafing dishes have been here now for a couple of weeks, because I was, I've seen them.
We, you know, if we don't have to put tables here, you also increase capacity, and people, the 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 look of the room will change into a more professional.
Thank you.
So we're going to try and do those things and upgrade some of that, and maybe, you know, some of the nicer things around here that.
Yeah, the technology that's available today for this room is amazing.
Yeah, well, we we can do a lot of that, so we don't have to have, you know, plug-ins and wires and things all over the place.
Yeah, because that's a safety hazard over there.
No, we'll we'll have that, that'll all be protected, that's part of the deal, so. I just wanted to let you know, those are some of the things that we're working on, I'm working on, that you'll notice a difference. And I think it just doesn't benefit the council, but also the groups that use this here, because, you know, there's some safety hazards in here, and they do kids reading hours in here, and I always cringe, like, tables are being set up or certain things, like, who's going to jump off of what or knock their head here or there. So I want to do some of those things that we don't have a problem, so you'll see that happening. And I would also know at the the councilwoman's request, the front porch here has been power washed, and will be done every quarter. And the windows will be done on a more regular basis, so we're trying to, I want to upgrade, because this is a professional office, and I think we want to treat it as such, used by a lot of community groups, but it's, I just want to, want you to let you know that I've heard some of these things, we're trying to get them done, and I'm also doing it within budget. I also, and have learned, your budget always looks better, and if you do this stuff right away in June, you're like, in July, next June, you're like, oh, gosh, spent all my money, I'm really tight. Now we know where we stand, and I know where the budget's going to be tight or whatever, I don't remove my flexibility, so now I've got room to do within, live within budget and get it done this year, so you'll see things being done between now and the other.
I appreciate that. Our residents paid quite a bit of money for each of those bricks that were out there with their names, the foundation, you know, raised that money for this, so it does look a lot nicer now that it, now that it's been cleaned. Yeah, it's nice, thank you for that.
Okay, well, thank you for those formative reports.
I have a question on number 98, Lincoln Crosswalk, researching with city manager, and it says pending RFP response. What's, what is this? It's number 98.
It should be pending RFP response, number 98 is Lincoln Crosswalk.
Lincoln where?
Lincoln and Wanda. If you're familiar, there's the the Wanda Green Belt, that has two sidewalks on it.
Right, that's that street is orange, it's not Villa Park.
That's Wanda.
No, it is, it is, when you turn into our neighborhood.
When you turn in.
It is, the crosswalk is right there on the street, which is Villa Park.
From the green belt.
Yeah, from the green belt. If you go to the other side of the green belt, there's a sidewalk as well.
Correct.
Now, what we've been talking to, and this was raised to LEAC, and the city engineers talked about it, people coming off Wanda are, it's a non-lit crosswalk. So as people come off, they're coming off at a at a major arterial or an arterial, they turn on that road, and they are not, people in the crosswalk in the evening are not visible potentially, because it's not lit. So one of the ideas, and we haven't done anything at this point, is potentially moving it to the other side of the green belt, where there actually is a sidewalk entryway and exitway on both sides. It's it's interesting, whoever designed it, you have to actually, you're walking on one side of the green belt, you have to go the other side to cross on the crosswalk. Well, somebody coming at a very quick rate of speed can sort of unfortunately hit a pedestrian fairly quickly without any time to react. So if you moved it back, the thought being is, from a public safety perspective, it might save or give some reaction time. It's not a lit intersection, that's sort of the problem, so we're talking about, we're talking with the city engineer and planning, and we're not completely sure where we want to go with it. The pending RFP response was not appropriate, that's a misnomer, but what we're looking to improve public safety for those people, joggers, walkers, whatever, at night, who can't be seen, and, you know, I mean, it was raised by a a resident who said that he was afraid he almost hit somebody coming off of Wanda, where he couldn't, you know, it's dark, so.
I don't know if you know this, but last Saturday, there was an incident there. Two bicyclists got hit by a pickup truck.
Coming off of Wanda?
No, the pickup truck was coming Lincoln onto Wanda, and the two bicyclists, I think, you have to look at the sheriff's report, were coming northbound on on Wanda, and for some reason or other, they all three collided at one time right there in that intersection.
Well, one of the things that we're talking about is the replacement of the stop sign as well, we have to address that if we move the stop sign. So we've got a little few things to work out there and think through, but but the goal is to try and improve public safety there, and you cited a good example. If we can remove that by maybe moving your crosswalk, those are the types of things that are very minimal expensive, we might go ahead and try and pursue. That, again, it's really interesting, the the green belt allows you to go to.
Go both ways.
Cross there anyway.
Yeah.
It's just not marked as a crosswalk.
Well, we'll now move on to mayor and council member matters. It's now time to hear individual council member information items, and we'll start with Councilman Rosini, or Mayor Potem Rosini.
I just wanted to thank everybody that came out to the boat, or excuse me, the Villa Park Little League Opening Day Parade, all the residents, all the volunteers, all the participants from Orange and Villa Park, the council members that were in attendance, Steve Franks, our city manager, carved out some time from his family to do that. I also wanted to thank Crystal Miles and Sam Stremmack for all that they have done, all that the other volunteers were able to do. It was a fantastic event, I really enjoyed it, my family enjoyed it, I think the whole community had a blast, the turnout was fantastic. Of note, the meetings that I went to this month, just for the record, OCFA on the 25th, excuse me, of January, and then again on the 22nd of February, and then we had a LEAC on the 23rd, or excuse me, Best and Bravest on the 23rd, and then the LEAC was on the 12th. Been a great month, really look forward to fantastic summer coming up. Just want to leave a couple of remarks, if you see something, say something. If you see something going on in our community that doesn't look right, contact the sheriff's department. If you see somebody lighting off fireworks that they shouldn't, call up 911, let let the sheriff's department know what's going on, we'll have a few extra deputies out there, and thank you for everything that you've done, Steve, and let's have a a great rest of this month and and March.
Thank you. Councilman Pitts?
I too, my wife and I attended Best and Bravest last Friday. I'm always in awe, every time I go to one of those events, the sacrifice that these these folks make, men and women, not only in the fire department, but also in our sheriff's department as well, because I've been to events like that as well. But I'm just in awe all the time, when you look at some of the rescues and things and the sacrifices that they make along with their spouses and so forth, it just, it's a very humbling experience to go do something like that. I too attended Little League Opening Day. I want to remind everybody that Boots and Bats is coming up, March 24th, that's the annual fundraiser for our Little League, and I encourage everybody to come, because it's probably one of the greatest events here in Villa Park. They have it right out here in front of, front of City Hall, and it's a great time, there's lots of food, I think we all enjoyed really good food last year, and they have some auction items, which we took part in, and the president of Little League actually cooked us dinner, and that was phenomenal. So I I just encourage everybody to buy your tickets and come to Boots and Boots and Bats on March 24th. There's also this Saturday, March 3rd, there's a compost event over here at the high school. Our partners, Republic Services, brings compost here, and you can get up to 60 gallons, so bring your bags and your buckets and your small trailers and.
No bags, no bags.
Oh, no bags, you're right, you're right, okay, yes, buckets. Buckets and trailers, I bring my trailer. So that's this this Thursday, and last but not least, I wanted to talk a little bit about something, and maybe get Chad to to stand up, talk a little bit about it too. But a couple of weeks ago, the Boy Scout troop has a truck and trailer that was stolen, and in that trailer were all of their camping materials and so forth. If I'm not mistaken, some of the things that they had in there were boxes that were made some many years ago, and were very precious to the people, to the Boy Scouts and to the members of the of the team. And so somebody was, I hate to say this on public, but.
Not in Villa Park. It wasn't parked in Villa Park.
No, 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 but somebody was sick enough to take that from these boys and deprive them of of their opportunity to, you know, have fellowship and do the things that they do to promote what they do in in Boy Scouts. So I'm I'm just, my wife and I challenged the Rotary group last week to 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 come out one and all and 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 help with donations to replace the the vehicle and the and the, I mean, it's very, very expensive stuff. And Chad, if you want to say anything about that, you're more than welcome to, but, you know, when you when you think about a a nice pickup truck, a nice trailer, you know, all the tents and everything that were taken, you're probably talking about $40,000, $50,000 worth of items that were stolen. And I mean, it's just, that's just to me, is is terrible. I mean, it's just despicable. But I I challenge everybody in Villa Park to do what they can to potentially help the Boy Scouts replace that, and, you know, anything we can do to help, Chad, let us know, okay?
Very briefly, you've said it very well. There's a a couple of posts up on the Facebook pages throughout Villa Park. We put one up in Rotary as well, but to help, it's Troop 850, it's the Villa Park Boy Scouts, they've been around for a long, long time, and as Councilman said, their equipment was stolen, and they've got a GoFundMe page to try to replace it, and it always helps when the community can pitch together and give back, so.
So can you tell us what the page is?
Perhaps we can put it somewhere, but the.
I was just talking to Eileen, we'll get it up on the website or somewhere or something on the web.
Appreciate that.
Or Chad, and see if we can't get something.
Okay.
Absolutely, if you look for Troop 850, you'll you'll find it.
Okay, okay.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
I was involved with my son with Troop 850 for a number of years. We used to keep the materials over off the water district. Is that the same place it was stolen from?
So the troop went to a method of keeping stuff in a trailer that instead of going and taking it into storage and putting it in a trailer, into a, renting a trailer and taking it out from there and then putting it back in the storage, they could keep most of the stuff in a enclosed trailer, and then just hook up to that and take it out as a matter of efficiency. And so when the whole trailer is taken, you get a lot of that stuff taken away.
Yeah, but was it still stored over off of Prospect or?
So there is a lot of stuff that's kept in that storage unit, but the trailer itself that had all that stuff was in the process of being loaded for a particular camping trip, so it moved out of that area to get, they had just gone, all the boy, the quartermasters had gone, done their checklists and gone through everything and verified all the, all that the stuff was there and working, and then it got taken, so.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Okay, anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, Councilwoman Vassini.
Okay, all right. I worked with OCTA and Orange County Supervisor Todd Spitzer to acquire a bench that was placed at the bus stop on Wanda and, what is that, Wanda and Prospect? There's been a bus stop there, that is our third bus stop that we have for the city of Villa Park. There hasn't been a bench there for years, and I thank OCTA and Todd Spitzer for providing that bench to us. They actually moved the bus stop also, they moved it about four feet, which gives the residents who is making that home that's there, just absolutely beautiful, a little bit more room to be there, and it has just been a wonderful community response to that bench. Something is so simple, you see moms there, kids there, people going to work, and at least now they have a place to put their shopping bags and and sit for a few minutes. It is proofed so that you can't sleep on top of the bench, so it does have a a bar down the middle, so, you know, we can't have a big dog or anything lay on the bench or anything like that, but I'm very pleased that that bench is there. I attended a homeless task force with ACCO City down in Irvine. Every county, everybody in the Orange County was present, except maybe one city. What we had there was about 90 minutes of talking about the homeless issue and how that although we here in the city of Villa Park per se do not have a homeless issue, we still need to contribute our resources, our talents, our opinions to the county, because it's a county issue. And so since we don't have it, we want to make sure that we're not landlocked with homelessness and vagrant issues. So it was a very good discussion, there'll be discussions that move further in that, and certainly the council will be made abreast of things that are happening. But this task force is working very, very aggressively, and we need to pay attention as to what Senate bills will be coming up in the future to take away our local control and to see whether or not they actually want to put some housing in our city. So we're trying to keep on track of that. We do have two seminars that we've put together. One of them is an emergency evacuation seminar, I did post this on social media today, Thursday, March 15th at 6:30. What this is about is not the normal one that we normally have about having a birth certificate and your taxes and everything in a bucket. What this is, is where do you go when there is an evacuation? A lot of people, the last time we had the Canyon Fire, they didn't know where to go, they didn't know, how do I know if I'm going to be evacuated? Where do I go, where do I take my dog, where do I take my horse? So we've got the county coming in, county's coming in with the sheriff's department, and they're going to tell everybody where you go, how you know you're going to be evacuated, signing up for your OC alert, so your phone goes off, signing up for the other, I forget what it's called, but so your home phone gets turned on, but that is 6:30 on the 15th. In addition to that, on March 29th, we do have some time, but we're going to have a Coyote Town Hall that is being presented by a fishing game and the Orange County Public Works.
No animal care.
Animal care. And what this is, it's it's a town hall about what you can do to take back your backyard. And there are coyotes here, we live in an area where they, you know, we have possums, we have coyotes, recently a mountain lion, which they did catch one in Irvine, hopefully it was the same one, and he's been relocated. But they will come in and they will tell you what to do, because we do have coyotes, and they do jump fences, and what kind of parameters are out there. So this is something I know that has, people have been talking about it for a long time, I'm very pleased that we were able to get this on the calendar, March 29th, so please join me when we do that. I did not go to the Best and Bravest, I went to the Orange Foundation Gala, which was honoring this year the Orange County, Orange Police Department and the chief, Tom Cassell. honoring this year the Orange County, Orange Police Department and the chief, Tom Casella, that was a very, a nice event, Orange PD does work in conjunction with the sheriff department, certainly here in Villa Park, when we do have an issue, they do come in and they do assist, and it was a very nice evening having them there. Speaking about the Little League Opening Day, it was wonderful, I enjoyed it, and I'm going to tie it into doggy walk bags, the Little League and the schools maintain those yards, dogs are not allowed on Orange Unified School District property, dogs are not allowed, which means you don't bring your dog, and you don't let your dog do its business, but it's happening more and more, and we have to remember that our kids do PE on there, the kids walk on there, they play on there, and even if somebody picks it up with the blue bags that the city of Villa Park is providing, none of us want our kid to be sitting down on that grass doing push-ups or when a dog is pooped on it, so remind your neighbors when you see them on those properties, we want the doors to be left open for OUSD, we don't want them to close the doors, and if we continue to let animals on the property, the doors are going to be closed, or someone's going to get bit. The doggy walk bags, the city provides, and we have about fifteen or sixteen dispensaries all over the city, and it's come to my attention, people are just pulling their car up and taking the whole roll, in fact, somebody did it in front, in front of Mike, not even two weeks ago, did, stops their car, opens it up, takes the roll and walks away, and I think we've gone, I, we've gone through thousands and thousands of these bags, if you see people doing that, say something, get a license plate, but I mean, they're taking the whole roll when this is coming up, and Mike is replacing these weekly, Mike? Weekly, they're empty, we don't have enough residents in this city who are walking their dogs, they're using them as grocery bags, so, just want to bring that to your attention, it's something that's, has just struck me wrong lately. Other than that, I went to Toronto Water Board's Board Meeting, nothing monumental there, but I did go, and I went to ACCOC's leader reception meeting, Councilman Pitts was there, and I believe the mayor was there also, and again, the topic of conversation was homelessness, because we were at Angel Stadium, and it should look a little cleaner today, because everybody's out of the, out of the riverbed, and that's it, see you Saturday when we're dispensing dirt.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Nelson?
Nothing.
Got the report?
One last thing.
Oh, yes?
Forgot to mention that, again, just a reminder, Saturday, March 17th, from 2:00 to 4:00, here at City Hall, we're going to have the Home Security Fair, and it's a, it's a great way to educate yourself on current crime trends and how to protect yourself from it, it was a fantastic standing room only event last year, and I expect the same, if not more. Steve?
I just wanted to, I, the councilwoman, I received a phone call just before the meeting from Frank Kim, they have cleared the riverbed, the sheriff's department has done that, they have, he reported to me that there are 750 people in motel rooms for at least the next 30 days, they're working on day 31, the day 31 plan, but he wanted to report to me that if you go down the riverbed, you'll see that, 5,000 needles were picked up, 15 tons of trash, just, a lot of work's being done, so, I just wanted to report that, if you, the residents of Villa Park will notice that, that if they drive west on Cotella and drive through to, down toward the Honda Center and whatnot, you'll notice a big difference in the riverbed, but Frank wanted to report that, he was calling all the quartermasters today to let them know the status of what was happening, and the county general fund is paying for that, he told me the estimated cost at this point was 1.5 million dollars.
And that will come back to us, and that's something that's important for the future, you know, LA County put, just put a tax on their residents, and it has, you know, for them to pay for issues such as this, so, in the future, it's something that I think that we're going to need to deal with, it's a county issue, it's not a city issue.
Okay, well, I had a pretty busy month, but since we're, it's getting late, I'll just highlight a couple of items, on February 16th, I attended the 10th anniversary celebration of the groundwater recycling system, this is a joint project between the Orange County Sanitation District and the Orange County Water District that provides additional treatment of wastewater for recharging our groundwater basin, this system improves the reliability of our water supply, and during the celebration, the 100 million gallons of recycled water, wastewater in 24 hours was officially certified as a world record by the Guinness Book of World Records. My general profession is in the water wastewater management industry, and the, this project that has been implemented by the sanitation district and the Orange County Water District is viewed as a model that's being emulated statewide and nationwide and worldwide, people come from all over to, to see this. The sanitation district is actually, and the water district are in the process of expanding that system, so that they'll be able to recycle essentially all of the wastewater produced from our sanitation district plant, with the exception of the, there will be some brines that will be, continue to be discharged out, seven miles out into the ocean, because that is uneconomical to, to recycle, but anyway, that was quite an accomplishment, we're looking for more. On February 22nd, I represented the city at the 2018 Schools to Watch Taking Center Stage Celebration at Sarah Villa Middle School, at this assembly, Sarah Villa was presented with the 2018 Schools to Watch Award, this is a very prestigious award, and to earn this designation, schools must complete an extensive application that is reviewed by middle school experts, Sarah Villa is one of only 22 middle schools in all of California recognized to receive this designation 2018, and will be recognized in Sacramento at the California Middle Grades Alliance Annual Luncheon on March 1st, I think the, we should all compliment the, the teach, the faculty and the school district for earning that award, that was, it's quite an accomplishment. Also on Saturday, I participated in the Villa Park Little League Opening Day ceremonies and assisted with the other council members in judging the creative floats prepared by the teams, my son went all the way through the Villa Park Little League from age four, he was big for his age, and the opening day parade is a wonderful tradition, my son and I have many wonderful memories, and a lot of good friends from our participation in the Little League, a lot of energy out there, and this is an opportunity for the, both the kids and their parents to have a lot of fun and make a lot of lifelong friends. Finally, this morning, I attended the Infinite Suburbia Conference sponsored by Chapman University, Infinite Suburbia is the title of Villa Park's own Joel Kotkin's latest work, which he co-edited with Alan Berger, Director of the Center for Advanced Urbanism at MIT, and it addresses a lot of the concerns about land use and planning as, that Villa Park is now facing with our Housing Element update. Okay, with that, I'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of our former Villa Park distinguished citizen Pete Moriarty, who passed away on February 4th, 2018, at the age of 83, Pete was pretty well-known and loved by everybody in town, and we'll miss him. In honor of Pete, I'd like to read Pete's opening comments before he led us in the Pledge of Allegiance at the March 28th, 2017 city council meeting, this is what Pete said, "If I may be allowed to preface this with a few remarks, I followed this flag as a combat veteran across the plains, through the swamps, and into the jungle vastness of South Vietnam. I never take this pledge, but that I recall the comrades in arms who have taken it with me and before me. We went to do our duty, all of us, with the, with the full bloom of youth, joyously only to have so many cut down by the other side of the battle. As we take this pledge tonight, I ask that you recall the fallen in all our wars, and also remember those who stand guard this night, that we might have this place of peace and security and freedom." After Pete finished the Pledge of Allegiance, he received a standing ovation. So, again, I'd like to close the meeting tonight in memory of Pete Moriarty. Thank you, we're adjourned.